Input. Okay.
Madam President, Casey Hebert, Stratford resident. Before I begin, I know I have limited time to make comments, but before I begin, I do have a few documents here. I've got five pages of documents here. There's no photos, there's no names, there's no personal identifying information in it. In fact, three of these pages are publicly available online. This is a new handwriting document, this is one page in the bylaw, this is from the Secretary of State website, and these are two emails with no names, no personal identifying information. These emails are actually incredibly polite, very nice, very good content. I would like to get this copied, I would like to get a copy of this. Board members, I will, I'm gonna talk briefly about those, about those documents. I'm probably only gonna spend like 10 seconds, probably on each one, but I thought it would be good context if I could give you those documents first. So, board members, I think sometimes it's forgotten that a PTO is a business entity. It's a business organization. In this case, the PTO is registered with the Secretary of State. It's also registered with the IRS. It's registered 501(c)(3) with the IRS. So what does that mean? That means we are mandated, the PTO is mandated under state law and federal law. This is non-negotiable. This is the law that the PTO has to follow. The PTO, the PTO is not just a club where people can just take money and give money and that sort of thing. They have to follow the laws of the DOJ and of the state. Now, board members, you received that check for $19,614.94. That check was given without the authority of the PTO. The PTO owns and controls that money, and I'll show you that here in just a moment. So the PTO did not vote to donate that money. They did not vote to dissolve the PTO, and the PTO actually did not dissolve. I will, I would like to start by showing you the first document in that stat I gave you there. That first document is the Business Entity Form from the Secretary of State website. If you look at the top, Stratford School Parent Teacher Organization, business status is active. This was taken this week, and you can actually see where I printed it, it's right at the top of the page. And I checked again today, it is still active. Now, how else would we know? Well, if you've got any free time on your hands, I don't know if you've got any free time, but you can go into Google and you can search, "How do I run a charity in New Hampshire?" One of the first things you'll see, you don't need to be a legal expert, you can pull this document from online. This document right here is the Guidebook for New Hampshire Charitable Organizations. It's put out by the Attorney General's Office. This gives all the rules for how to run a charity. If you go to page 14 of this document, it shows you what's required in New Hampshire to dissolve a charity. Item one, vote to dissolve. That didn't happen. Item two, pay outstanding debt. Item three, statement of dissolution of the Secretary of State. So you can see there, it was never dissolved with the Secretary of State. Item four is you're gonna submit a final form with a charitable trust unit, which also did not happen. There's even more evidence that the board did not dissolve. That last piece of evidence is actually audio recordings. One of the prior board members used his cellphone and audio-recorded the May and June meetings. So in there, you will hear that there is no vote to dissolve. Now, I don't have those audio recordings, but I'll comment on that in just a moment here. The next two pages, and like I said, I'm gonna go quickly through these, not to waste anyone's time, are emails. The first email went out on June 23rd, this is a Monday. The next one went out on July 1st, which was the following Tuesday. These emails came from the new PTO president. It went to the prior board. These emails are extremely nice. It's asking for a smooth transition. It's asking for assistance in transitioning all of the leadership responsibilities. This was a call out to try and transition. And if you look in here, it even says, "We would like to express our sincere gratitude to you and the entire 2425 Board." It is very nice, very polite. Board members, I could not include the responses tonight in this forum, but I will tell you that this request was denied. Now, the next document, actually, we're gonna bet it right here. Yep, the next document in here is one single page from the bylaws. The only thing you need to take away from this is that the prior PTO board and the president, their term expires on June 30th, and the new board takes over July 1st. And now, the last document. This last document comes from New Hampshire statute. In the state of New Hampshire, a charity is required to have five members. Period. Again, non-negotiable. A charity must have at least five members. What does this mean? This means that there is no such thing as sole authority. There is no such thing as singular authority. It needs to be voted on to donate funds, it needs to be voted on to dissolve. Those two things did not happen. Now, the charitable trust unit did not give advice on dissolving. The charitable trust unit, the DOJ, did not tell anyone to withdraw all the money and donate the money. That did not happen. How do we know that? Well, I know that because I've been working with the DOJ on this. Second, the reason I know that is because the DOJ puts out this document. This document is regarding basic internal financial controls for all nonprofits. A nonprofit is controlled right here. Who's responsible for controlling? Every member of a nonprofit board shares the responsibility of financial control. Every member. No one can have one singular authority. Second to this, so this is one. Second to this is back to that guidebook. This gives, this gives whoever's controlling the ability to look up and see what they have to do. And I like this part because it's the only bold section in here. "Under no circumstances should a charitable organization do the following: engage in transactions that impair the charity's ability to perform its mission." In this case, all of the money was taken without the authority of the PTO. Checking was drained, and the savings was drained. Board members, at this point, I think we, the PTO knows what this was. This was an attempt to keep the money from going to the new PTO. Because that check is addressed to the school. If you look at the two-line, it says Stratford School. It was never donated, it did not dissolve. But now, the new board, they can't cash that check. That check could have been made out to any of the new board officers. It could have been made to any one of them, it could have been mailed to them, it could have been left at the front of the school and, you know, put in an envelope. I'd be willing to bet that somebody could have put in an envelope and given it to Rob, and he probably would have said, "Sure, I'll give this to the new president." That's just my guess, I don't know. But there's a million other ways this could have gone. But it's addressed to the school. That makes it a donation. Board members, I think there's only two ways at this point that this check can actually be dealt with. My recommendation, my opinion, would be this. Option one, and this is the one that I think would actually solve the majority of the problems, sign the check over a third-party transaction, work with a bank, make sure it's all done correctly, and sign it over to the new board members. The new board members can deposit it into their bank, and it will be safe and controlled in there. They will not touch it or use it until they have DOJ approval. They're currently working with the DOJ, I think they're about to be approved any day. I don't wanna say any day, because it is till the government, it might take a few weeks, but they're working with the DOJ for approval. Now, that's half of it. The other half is the prior board has to deactivate with the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State has the trade name. So deactivate with the Secretary of State, turn the check over to the new board, I think it would solve most of the problems. If you don't like that option, I do think there's one other option. Option two would be take that check and give it to the Stratford Police Department. Board members, if you woke up tomorrow morning and you checked your bank account, and your savings is cleaned out, your checking is drained, all of your money is gone and has been donated, and your accounts are closed, what would you do? You'd file a police report. I think at that point, the board members would have to go to the police department as well. They'd have to say what happened, they'd have to say, "We never approved this, we are the board." They have a duty. This is not a legal threat. Nobody's threatening a lawsuit, this is not a legal threat. This is a requirement. The charitable trust unit, the DOJ, the Attorney General's Office says, "The board should take immediate action if the executive or anyone else violates the duties to the organization." I don't think they would have a choice. And I think while they're filing the police report, I think they would also have to file a police report regarding that audio recording. Those audio recordings were not turned over, and in the state of New Hampshire, audio recordings are controlled under the criminal statute. It's not for us to decide here what happens with that check and with that money. At that point, if there's any sort of criminality, it would have to be determined at the Stratford County District Attorney's Office. I don't see another way around it. I think there's only two options. You may find another, ma'am. Board members, I'm not sure, but that's all I can come up with at this point. Now, the new board, they've got some hurdles, but I think, I think at the end of the day, they're, first off, they worked so hard to try and get this board legally compliant. They've worked with the DOJ, they've done a great job collecting as many documents as they can, but they do not have everything. They don't have any itemized receipts. They don't have bank statements, they don't have tax filings, they don't have anything about the Amazon business account. They're missing several documents, and that's what they're trying to work on right now to get fully compliant. This is the bank ledger from the PTO. Board members, donation, $800, no idea where it came from. Amazon, $419, no idea what it went to or what it was. Amazon, $1,026, teacher appreciation. On Amazon, I mean, do we have an Amazon business account, or was this a personal account? Was this coming from funds? I have no idea, I don't think the board knows either, but they're missing a lot of stuff, and they're really working hard to collect it all and put it all together. But at the end of the day, they do need their money back to continue the mission of the PTO. And ultimately, they need to vote on things like school playground equipment, classroom supplies, and all the things the PTO normally does. So, board members, I would ask that you consider this, this, again, it's just my opinion. If you don't have any questions for me, I'll take a step back.
Can we have copies of what you just shared, please?
As far as the guidebook...
Just everything that you're holding up, other than what you handed us?
Um, well, the guidebook actually has my notes in it. I only made one because it's all, it's 20 pages. I could email it. I can give you, what I can give you would be these other documents. Ma'am, I only have two of them. Uh, yes, what I have here is a Stratford School Parent Teacher Organization banking ledger. And what I have here also is from the DOJ, Basic Internal Financial Controls Document. It's a two-page document, I have that as well. I would give you the guidebook, but again, it's 20 pages I didn't pretty much have.
Okay, anyone else? Just your name, please.
Um, so, Cherie Mello, um, I'm a Stratford resident as well. Um, so, I'm not as prepared as I need to be, so apologies for reading off of paper. Um, good evening, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Cherie Mello, and I've been a proud Stratford resident for over 15 years. We moved here in 2010 because one of the greatest strengths our town has is its exceptional school system. My husband and I knew that someday we wanted to start a family, and this was the community where we wanted our children to grow up and learn. And today, we have two amazing kids who are thriving in the Stratford school system, and we couldn't be happier with the opportunities and support they've received. I'm honored to be stepping into the role of PTO president for the 2025 to 2026 school year, alongside my five dedicated fellow board members, some of whom are here tonight, with a lot of other support, as you can see. We have, are energized and ready to build on the strong foundation previous PTO boards have created over the years. Well, this is my first time speaking to you, here not only to introduce myself, but also to share why I chose to run for the position and why I believe so strongly in the PTO's mission. For me, it comes down to connection. I've seen firsthand how powerful it is when families, educators, and administrators work together to share, toward the shared school, creating the best possible learning environment for our students. That's what drew me to the PTO in the first place, and it's what inspired me to take on the leadership role. Over the years, I chaperoned field trips, volunteered at book fairs, cheered my kids on in rec sports, and rolled up my sleeves to help the numerous PTO-led events. The PTO is more than a group of volunteers, it's a bridge. A bridge between the classroom and the home, between what's happening in our school and how families engage with it. Yes, we organize events, raise funds, and support teachers, but our deeper purpose is to build community, foster communication, and strengthen the bonds that make our district special. The newly-elected vice president, volunteer membership, volunteer and membership coordinator, we gotta shorten that title, and I were voted in by parents on June 3rd during the PTO's annual election. Since our term began, we have been working diligently to bring the PTO into full compliance with New Hampshire state law. We are committed to operating an honest, visibly responsible, and fully transparent organization. While we haven't been able to hit the ground running as quickly as we'd like due to challenges you're all already aware of, we are now in the final stages of review and are optimistic that we will be fully compliant very soon. Once compliance is finalized, the return of the PTO's funds will be a critical step. Having those resources restored will allow us to immediately provide support to our students, staff, and school programs faster and with far greater ease. Rather than starting from scratch, we will be able to move forward with planned initiatives, fulfill teacher requests, and organize enriching opportunities for our kids without delay. Earlier this year, when the call for PTO members went out, several of us stepped forward without hesitation. Over the following months, we recruited even more enthusiastic volunteers. We've seen renewed energy, fresh ideas, and a true commitment to our students' success. We believe the PTO is once again on the path to being the thriving impactful organization it has always been. That's why I feel it's both practical and essential to continue operating under the existing PTO and structure. A trusted name recognized by families, staff, and the wider community for decades. Rebuilding under this banner honors the work of those who came before us, maintains the goodwill and trust the name carries, and allows us to focus our energy where it belongs, supporting our children and their education. I believe in the vision of a stronger, more collaborative PTO, one that listens, includes, and always puts kids first. With your support to continue under the established PTO identity and operations, we can move forward without unnecessary disruption, ensuring stability for our programs and relationships. I'm excited to work alongside you, all our incredible teachers and staff, and our dedicated parent community to support the district's vision and goals. Together, we can make sure every student feels supported, every teacher feels appreciated, and every family feels connected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Um, so, I'm gonna ask the board, if according to our attorney, with the information that the attorney had at the time, we were advised that all we could do was accept the donation. With additional information that was presented, do you feel that we should go back to our attorney, or would you like to make a motion now?
I guess, if I understand the process, there was a check written in a donation to the Stratford School.
Yes.
Those funds from that account no longer exist in that account? Is it like a cashier's check or a bank? Like, I don't know how that works.
It's a bank check. The account, and I don't think we need to get into all the details, but the account, as far as the information I have, has one person who has access to the account, and that person is able to sign checks. So that's all that I'm aware of.
Can I clarify one point?
Yes.
The attorney said, "Accept or deny."
Yeah.
Both options were on the table. The advice was to accept it, but I'm saying, both options were on the table. They said it was up to the board's decision about whether he wanted to take it or not.
Right, yeah, it was just, he just clarified everything, because you said that the only option was to accept it. I think what you meant was, there was other options mentioned.
Tonight.
That, right, and the attorney hadn't advised that as being one of the options.
I am, I'm wondering if we should send all of this information, additional information, back to the attorney, and then come back and decide with this additional information. Rather than make the decision to accept it or deny tonight, I would like to make the decision to...
It's completely your choice.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, this is my opinion.
What are the other people? What is the date on the check and would it expire and any kind of, I mean, it's gonna be three months or something, but just making sure there's not any activity.
I think it was July, it was, it was the day you were going on vacation, they actually had a date on it.
She said that she was thinking about expiration.
Yeah, I think it was July and...
I think they're usually supposed to do that.
Seventh or something like that.
Either way, I think we should refuse the donations to the PTO issue, not the school issue, and if we do accept that donation, there's no way to get that money back to the PTO regardless, so I don't see any, any, any good, I don't think so. I have no desire to get in the middle of any of the PTO stuff.
I, I agree. The advice from our attorney was to accept or deny.
Our attorney was assuming that it was a legal donation.
So this is, I don't know, anybody else?
I'd like to go back and ask.
I'd like to send it back to the attorney to guide us.
My concern is that if we deny, that it could potentially cause additional delay, if it is an option where...
Right.
I, I, yeah, I don't know, if the attorney advises that we can do the third-party sign of...
Right.
But is that us getting in the middle of something that they advise us not to get in the middle of? But I, I fear that, like, that would be the most, I think, the quickest process to continue.
It's absolutely getting in the middle of something, because if the PTO, outgoing PTO argues that they provided the donation to the school, and we didn't cash the donation per our current policies, and whatever the law is on that, we gave it to somebody else, we donated their money to someone else, this is a bunch of nonsense that we don't need to be involved in.
I think we need guidance from the attorney.
I think so, I think so too. I mean, I, I don't wanna be, I don't think we should be in the middle of it.
No.
And if we accept the donation, the money is no longer available for the PTO, and it is PTO money.
I, I agree.
This is going second class, and I understand that, but the PTO is here to assist the school, and doing anything with this money is going to hurt the school in the long run if we accept the donation.
So, is the board okay with just passing this, sending it back to the attorney with the additional information? This is why I asked for the additional documents, to send this all back to the attorney to advise us if there's another way to do this as were the two options that were presented.
I should, I don't think we need to vote on that.
We do, we do.
We're not doing it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you be calling to table?
Yeah.
Table in the motion.
Well, we didn't even make a motion.
All right.
Table in the hearing. Table in the hearing.
All right, and as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, if we either accept it or we don't accept.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't, I, I, my question is, is how to, I guess it's not our issue. I, I agree with going back, but I think the recommendation was still gonna be, you accept it, you don't accept it. And so...
Also, the attorney's not free, so every time I talk to the attorney, we cost our taxpayers money, where if you just say no to this check, then it doesn't cost us any more money, and we stay out of the turmoil.
But what happens to the check? It's where the check goes next.
I think I would agree, I would just hand it to the police department, it's not my problem. It's not my check.
Or... I, I liked it, I, I, I know it costs money, but I think having the attorney's advice is obviously important. So...
I think, I think, I think we need the attorney's advice, because I don't wanna make, I don't wanna do something in good faith and then find out we're violating something.
I think there was additional information that was presented tonight that our attorney may not have been aware of, and so therefore, if there are other options, that the attorney should look at those options and decide if that's something that we should do and advise us on.
Okay, I would like specifically to consult with the attorney about if we do in fact not accept the donation, what we need to do with it afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah. I would like that very specific information.
And there were two options that were mentioned tonight, and he may have a third option.
I'll have the video, but I can have him go and look at it himself, so he can get firsthand, as opposed to a second, third, and a fourth. One last question is, when do you want to reconvene to discuss this? Like, when do you want the next public hearing to be? Because I probably need to get it posted, I know, he'll probably have an answer by tomorrow or the next day at the latest. Do you want to wait weeks, or do you want to have something special where you resolve this in a more timely fashion?
We can have a special meeting that could be very quick. And if we're not going to accept the funds, it could be very quick, if he has an idea.
And it's a public hearing, right? So it's another public hearing, okay? So I will talk to Dean about all that, let you know.
All right, and then the other information you're going to email.
Ma'am, I can still email it, but I just took my notes out of it. Do you want to have this one?
Yes, thank you.
May I also just add one more comment? The check was dated July 9th, which was when the new PTO started. So that bank account was closed under the new PTO's term.
Yeah, but the new PTO did not approve it.
No, correct. So just an added point.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to close the hearing, please?
So, I move we close the hearing at 7:40.
Okay, do we have a second? Clear, second. Discussion. So we're going to send the information to the attorney, the two options that were presented, ask if there's any other additional advice, and once we get that information, we'll set another hearing. Okay? All right. Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yep. Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie? Yes. Okay, we're out of the public hearing. So the next, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda review and public comments. We open up to public comments again, okay? Okay, public comments will be open for 30 minutes, so that will be eight. All righty, agenda review, is there anything we need to...
Yes, I wanted to add something to the other...
Okay.
Uh, because we had been talking about, we talked about in the spring about, as this budget season was approaching, having some sort of, I don't know if it was gonna be a workshop or a public forum.
I have that on the date.
Oh, okay, never mind, I missed that. Okay, so, we'll discuss it where it's written.
Okay, all right, so, um...
A couple others I received, facility use requests. I had an update that I'd just like to give the board about some of the facilities and technologies, events that have happened over the summer. I had a sale of disposable supply of equipment for a laminator that we have with a recommendation. Let me see here, and we have a Stratford County Public Health Network request to advertise something, and they're not on our official list, so we just need the board to do that.
Okay. We also needed to add approval of the wellness policy and the change that, and we were also going to discuss the dress code, adding that one part to the policy. Anything else? All right, next on our agenda, we have our engineers here. Hi!
Come on down.
Come on down.
I think she wants to stay back there.
That's your wife.
This is my wife, Bethel Stevens. She's the president of our firm. She's okay?
Yes, it's all right.
We're here to talk about Amendment 4, I think.
Yes.
And Amendment 4 is next in our process here. We delayed to this point to get the, the funds, approval for the funds and the funds cleared, and our schedule is such that now, as we do the work, you should be able to submit our invoices for reimbursement promptly from the ARM FOLs. To talk about the scope of work, it basically carries us through bidding, contractor bidding, and, but it does fall short of the construction phase, as we've laid out several times over the last couple of years, in the progression of things and the budgets that we've prepared. So as we all know, the ARM grant was $463,764. This most recent phase of the work is $90,000. And if what it will do is carry, we're proposing for Task 9, we're continued from the numbering of the previous amendments. Consultation and meetings, 90% design, which gives you and others a chance to review things and make sure that things that we've talked about and you want to see in the design, or maybe tweak and, you know, add something simple here or there that wasn't thought of before, but that will give you a chance to comment and incorporate into the design for 100%. When the 100% design is completed, we'll apply for permits, and those applications will... will normally result in those permits and those permits will be used to update the design before bidding. Unless time is in, is a constraint, sometimes, it's not right now, but sometimes becomes one, and if that's the case, we'll sometimes bid a project while permit approvals haven't come across and we'll put a caveat in the contract that the contractor will be held to whatever the permit says that they must do. So it discusses, our proposal or Amendment 4 discusses 100% design and then permit preparation, of course, and then project bidding. We'll bid the project or we'll send the design package out for bid to electronic sources and we'll manage that process for you. We normally call that initial contract administration. During construction, we'll be doing the contract administration or at least whatever you all don't want to do. That's usually everything, so. And I'm happy to answer any questions if I have.
Does anybody have questions?
I supposedly messengered out to them.
What is the, I guess, currently the expected, you see the expected timeline being? A bit of, they have been in there.
Yeah, I think that we're going to go, we're going to construct next year. Right now, I, I see we'll probably finish 90% design before the holidays and then we'll accept comments and tidy up the design to 100% probably over the winter, submit for permits and the permits will come back. I'm hopeful because the regulators have been so involved in this so far that there won't be any surprises in the permits and if that's the case, then we can go to construction when it's convenient next year.
So when you say next year, I, I just under the impression that it would be June we were going to start. When would you start? Since we have to wait for the design after the holidays and then the permitting...
Yep.
Things to come back. When would we put out for bid?
That would normally be a couple of months before the construction, so we would normally, a contract about this size, we would normally put that out for bid in April.
Okay.
Sometime in April and we would give the contractors three or four weeks to reply and then we would present the bids to you with some advice and you will help you select one and, and then issue awards for June start. I assume June because it's the weather, but the school season as well, you know? So if you had any interest in going out there between now and then, construction wouldn't get in the way.
So you think putting out the bids in April would be, that wouldn't be too late for, to start in June?
I don't think it'd be too late. We often do it in April, it's possible if you go sooner than that, very possible.
Because you're going to know a lot of excavators, right?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's, um, the site is quite amenable to earthwork like we're doing, so it's got a lot of space. But we're going to have staging areas that are known because we're moving soil from one place to another, words of use. So there'll be some planning involved and in this middle process, we'll ask the contractor what they're going to do, but as an earthwork project, this is a very nice one.
Were we going to, in order to get the equipment out there, were we going to do a little bit of grading of parts of the road?
Yes, and that's mentioned here, actually. See if I can find it.
Is it Town F?
Okay.
Yeah, yep. Town F says, consult with the district and town DPW on potential improvements to Johnsonboro Road for bus and emergency vehicle access to the site and incorporate such improvements into the design. We assume that such improvements may consist of smoothing the surface by slight cut or fill, that's normally also referred to as grading.
So once we start in June, how long do you think it will take to complete the project?
Uh, it's a very good question. We usually ask the contractor that and we plan our construction phase services around that. I would guess, it could, I would say six to 12 weeks.
That's really means and methods though, right? I mean, that's for them, it means and methods, right? For them?
That's right, yeah. And the, what's meant by that is when we, if we prescribe a schedule or means and methods, that can often create problems in the bid for contractors who, you know, they've got a, the biggest chore for contractors is staging their work so that they can get projects done when they're expected to get done, show up at the sites, not leave their clients hanging. And when, when they do that, they're able to economize and their bid reflects that, but if we put tight constraints around them and dictate how they should do things, that can create much higher costs. So we try to leave things up to them and we, our specs are generally performance-based specs, so. And those specs will mostly be in the drawings themselves because we've just found contractors that are able to manage them that way.
Anybody else have questions? No? So again, this, the fee was, we already anticipated this, right? It's going to be part of the grant?
Yeah, we've been talking about this and tweaking it for two years.
Right, right. So it's not a surprise, it's what we expected. And we will have enough money in the grant after this to pay for the completion of the project.
I can't say for sure, but I expect to. The market moves up and down, so, yep.
Anybody else have questions? Make a motion to accept this amendment?
So it would be Amendment 4, all things as discussed and written amendment for the fee of $90,000.
Yes.
And that is to be coming from the general fund in anticipation of, or this doesn't...
It would come directly from the grant, we should be able to start drawing from the grant.
I'm not certain, but I was under the impression that the grant was a reimbursement, not a draw from. So I don't think you can submit our invoices directly to them. I would try if you can, certainly, but you may need to draw from the general fund. This, when this came up in the past, they were quick to point out that you can submit those invoices for payment and they will pay promptly, so. But I don't think they will do it without reimbursement. I can clarify that for you if you'd like.
I think you're correct.
Yeah.
We already have a line in the budget that we can in and out and I think at the end of the year it'll just bounce out.
Right.
That's where I...
That's the way I understood it.
And this money is earmarked, they have the funds, so it's not like we're waiting for the federal government to reimburse it.
The governor and the governor's council both approved this.
Yes. Okay.
So, I move we accept Amendment 4 as presented by Stevens and Associates for our Kennebilly Pond Dam removal project. The amendment as written for the fee of $90,000 to be reimbursed from our grant.
Do we have a second? That was a discussion?
It's the NHDES ARM grant, I just wanted to clarify that.
The amendment with date of July 25th, Tom, can you back? Okay, great. And we know that we will be reimbursed, so we're not worried about spending this money and not getting the money back.
As I will tell you that there are no guarantees in life, as everybody knows, but this is as sure as it gets, so.
Okay, I'm pretty good? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yep, Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes? Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you all, very much.
Alright, next, on the agenda, two of the school board minutes from June 25th. Page just 15. Okay, so...
Debbie, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Did any of the people here want to make public comments?
Oh yes, public comments, we have, public comments are open until 8:10. Public comment? Gina? Public comment? No? Okay, and that one's not on the agenda, then it goes. Okay.
All the women are other, which is the very end of the meeting.
We want to change Gina's?
Since she's up here, but the facilities request, right? Yeah, just unfortunately it didn't come in before I had the report.
Okay, um, we could do a general review of that and move, you don't need to stay for another hour, hour and a half, okay? We have a lot going on here, okay? Alright, so let's look at the meeting minutes from the 25th. We had non-public, public meeting, we have the workshop in here too? The work session?
The first two are work session and the next one's after that, or, so, that first non-public you're looking at was the non-public for the work session.
Okay.
And then the work session minutes are right after that.
Okay, oh, that was a marathon day.
Yep, and then we had another non-public.
Okay.
And then another non-public and then we had a public minutes.
Okay. So we have a lot. We have a motion to accept and then we can go through it?
Can you make, because I'm not listed here.
It's all non-public work and then plus the work session and the public meeting from June 25th.
Okay, I'm making a motion, we approve the non-public, public and work session minutes from June 25th.
Yes, perfect. Do I have a second? Second? Okay, discussion? Alright, let's look through and see if we see anything.
I just saw my name on the member's present, N.A., so I wasn't sure if I should be motioning this, but then I do see...
You arrived.
It does note when I arrived, so that was it.
I do have a couple of questions, not about the minutes, but what happened. Oh, yes, okay, I do. Page 26, and actually it starts on page 25. We don't have the, the amounts, the cost of each item, and I think that should be in here? We have the things that we, we approved, but we just don't have the cost?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else see anything? I have a question, are we reading any update on the series or reviews?
So I don't, I don't have a price yet, they're still in the process of giving us a quote. The freezer specs, the specs are asking, but the next level of that is that they're asking us to consider seriously replacing it because it is well beyond that.
Okay. Anybody else see anything? Good? Did we, and then, we should get an update on the skip order, I know that we asked, we didn't all have the attorney look at that?
Oh, they, we went a different direction.
Okay.
Yeah, the, so we didn't have to, we saved ourselves some money there.
Okay.
Do you want me to tell you about the, they've decided to get their own bank accounts and organize themselves. As a result of that, they'll do it directly to their own accounts.
Do you remember that was that, it was going to be an online donation and we weren't sure how it was going to work, so?
So I was able to not spend taxpayer dollars on another attorney request.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Alright, we stop? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Uh, I don't have his name.
Okay, you're gonna say?
I wasn't here for two hours.
Okay, and Debbie, yes? Alrighty, good. I'd like to ask the board if they would mind us moving one facility request right now on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, we want to just present that.
Absolutely, so, as every year this happens, the before and after school care program is asking to be able to do this Monday through Friday, 8:48 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Gina Walsh is here if you wish to ask any questions about it. They did provide their certificate of liability and as always, I strongly recommend the board approve this because we enjoy having them here.
It definitely helps, it helps our kids and it actually, I just, I think they should see this.
They all have it.
Oh, they all have it?
You have a regular next to it?
Oh, sorry, I thought this was a late edition of the agenda.
I walked around just then at the end of the house.
Alright, there you go. This does help parents, working parents to have childcare at a reasonable cost, a safe place. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the facility use request for Stratford Kinder Care, Kinder Campus? Do you want me to do Eric or you?
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we accept the Stratford's facility use request for before and after school care from Stratford Kinder Campus for the annual rate of $3,600 per year as described on the facility user advice.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second.
Discussion?
And that's use of the cafeteria in the school grounds from 7:00, 7:00 a.m. until the beginning of school and 3:10 p.m. until 6:00 p.m.
Okay. And I will say, there's additional information here, that this is an annual rate that we've allowed Kinder Campus to provide services for our kids and the tuition is low and affordable families, so it is very reasonable. I think people who have children and need to find childcare realize how well this is going to provide the service for our families, so.
I have, I have one question. What do you do when there's a two-hour delay?
We open at 9:00.
You open at 9:00, so you follow the same two-hour delay? Okay.
Alright, good? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes? There we go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so we're moving, anybody else here that needs anything? Okay, you're good. Now we're going to manifest, and that is certainly being a...
Eric, you want to?
You can send it over here, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Any questions on the manifest so far?
Okay.
I'm just going to give you a tiny update, so as you know, Adriana came aboard and has been steadily picking up new and additional pieces of the job, so she is now going to be taking point on the AP and she'll obviously have April and I and Craig as needed to help back her up, but she'll be doing more and more of that. She's also here to observe the minutes taken for about an hour, so I think she has to leave soon because they're going to start trading off on that responsibility as well, so we're going to basically hopefully cross-train everybody to be able to do all of it, so this strikes on April on vacation.
Great, thank you. You're welcome, board. Alright, so we have the manifest, no questions? No questions, alright. Action items?
New hires, here we go. Guys, ready for the back? Alright, we've got a lot. So I should do that one last, alright, so, why don't we start with coaches? Give it to somebody, I might have given it to one.
Do you need to talk a little?
Yeah, unfortunately. Thank you.
Oh, now.
I have a phone call.
I have one, too.
Thank you so much.
So, Jeff Merrill, our athletic director, mentally the athletic committee, they reviewed all of the ball applications. We have Sarah Lobdell as our boys soccer head coach at 60%, Shane Hurd is the boys soccer assistant coach at 40%, Barb Spatafora, girls soccer coach, Marissa McCutcheon, varsity volleyball coach, Rebecca Rohr, I think I'm saying it right, JV volleyball coach, and Sam Courier, cross-country coach, and the amounts are listed there as well. I strongly recommend the board accept these as the athletic committee likes them and that's really the only...
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have the people that we have. I just want to also point out the $500 for the JV volleyball coach is not something that we had done before, we don't have to get budgeted, but we feel that we need to pay the JV coach something and Jeff has that money available this year in his budget, so we should be... so we should be able to pay her a stipend. We haven't, I think she hasn't, she's helped out before, but they have found that they want to have two separate coaches. So it was a lot for one person to do. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion?
I move that we accept the nominations for the coaching positions as presented for the fall 2025 athletics.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion?
Okay. You can, you already listed them all, so.
No, you know, what we do is, can we just put this in the? April, can you just scan this section into the minutes thing? Okay. Good? All right. Any discussion?
Do we have a second?
Oh, I thought you were.
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion? Thank you for coaching everyone. It's gonna be great. All right. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie, yes?
Perfect. Next is Devin Wilson, math teacher position. Should the board choose to accept him, he will be looking to come aboard for the first day of school as our seventh grade math teacher. We would be hiring him under an emergency authorization, as he's not fully qualified as a math teacher. His degree is in computer science, but he's more than happy to come aboard with his math experience, get that emergency authorization, and then work his way towards being fully certified through the state DOE math teacher. We would be looking to hire him for the 188-day contract. He'd be on a BA, step one. That's what we do with all of our emergency authorizations when we hired them in the past. And we will pay for this out of the local operating budget with normal benefits. Available at a rate of $47,446.
Okay. I think we should just take this one separate, because the rest we have pairs, and then we have the one special position. Someone like to make a motion?
I move we accept the nomination for Devin Wilson for the position of math teacher for the 2025-2026 school year to be a, is it the BA step one? BA step one. BA step one at a rate of $47,446 to be paid for from the local operating budget. Benefits for the CBA, noting that this is an emergency authorization.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Discussion? Okay, can you clarify again what an emergency authorization means and what needs to be done?
Sure. So because there's so few people going through the education program in the state of New Hampshire, they passed a law that allows for school districts to hire people with bachelor's degrees in areas similar to the area of certification that we're trying to hire for. A one-year authorization under emergency status that allows them to work for us and gives them that years' worth of time to get the pieces checked off to get to a beginning of plan or to a beginning educator license. Either one will get them to the point where they can then work under a normal status. So what we'd be looking at is hiring him under this status, and then within, hopefully, a month or so, we get the praxis exams under his belt, and we get that part taken care of, and then he can apply for a beginning educator, uh, beginning of plan license. And at that point, he'd be on an intern license until he completes any other requirements they might have. Now, they may not have additional requirements. If that's the case, then he goes straight to beginning educator. But we won't know those requirements until he submits for that. We can't do that until he passes those praxis exams.
Okay, so this is conditional upon?
Absolutely conditional upon receiving the emergency authorization, first and foremost, because once again, we're in the process of getting that all set up.
Okay, so it's conditional, and also, this is a one-year position, which will be reevaluated at the end of the year?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Anybody else? No? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes?
I choose this. I gotta just do a paper, put down my shirts on. That was interesting.
I'm told to pay your respects.
Sure. All right. So next, I have a pile of paraprofessionals. The first one, Kathleen Donahue, coming in as a, just got full-time paraprofessional, seven hours, 35 hours a week, 182 days. She'll be an ACEHPT, step two, which brings her to a rate of 1807 per hour. State, I'm just gonna go through all of them. Stacy Gothier, she'll be coming to us, now again, full-time paraprofessional, seven hours, 35, 182, not HPT, step 3.1, at a rate of 1732 an hour. Leanne Cunningham, who will be a part-time paraprofessional, HPT, step seven, which puts her at 1932 an hour. Maureen McConnell is coming back to us. She was with us before. She's coming back. Since full-time, again, seven hours, 35 hours, non-HPT, step three, at 1732 an hour. Linda Plaza, as we all know, retired. She's gonna come back part-time and help us out. So she'll be coming back at a step 17 for 2182 an hour. Karen Libby, same thing. She was retired, but she's gonna come back and help us out part-time. So she'll be at step 19 at 2245 an hour. Kathleen Goldrick will be a part-time paraprofessional. She has got a bachelor's degree, so she's on the VABS, and she's got a lot of experience, so step 20. She'll be coming in at 2319 an hour. And then Christina Gerstman, she is going to be a full-time paraprofessional, VABS, 3.3, and that'll bring her in at a rate of 1857 an hour. So that's quite a mouthful, but April and Marissa and Melissa have all been working very hard to locate and bring in as many pairs as possible, so I can't make enough of our others.
So we have eight, according to my calculate.
Six, seven, eight. Yes.
Several of them are part-time. So do you want to do this all in one motion, or do you want to do it in part-time first?
Let me do two motions with.
Four and four, by the way, for full-time or hard-time.
Okay. Full-time, full-time, full-time. Full-time. I'll do the four full-times first. So I move we accept the nomination for the following paraprofessionals for the 25-26 school year in a full-time status to be paid for from the local operating budget. Benefits for the CBA, salaries as previously discussed. Kayleen Donahue, Stacy Gothier, Christina Gerstman, and Maureen McConnell.
Okay, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Discussion? So just knowing, even with the hiring of the eight paraprofessionals, we are still?
Short five full-time special ed paraprofessionals, one full-time kindergarten paraprofessional, and we are in the process of evaluating some other students that could result in one, two, or even three more special ed paraprofessionals. So right now, we're short six, but we may be short nine very soon, depending upon the outcome of those evaluations.
Okay. So anybody else? All right, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes? Great. Now we have the part-time.
Okay, so I move we accept the nomination for the following four individuals for the position of part-time paraprofessional for the 25-26 school year. Salaries as previously discussed, and details and benefits for the CBA. Leanne Cunningham, Karen Libby, Linda Plaza, and Kathleen McCaldren.
Okay, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Discussion? We're thankful to have some of our longtime pairs come back part-time. That's awesome. Very good. Anything else? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
And I'll do, I didn't just give you. Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes? All right. All right. So now, before we do the next one, we need to approve the position. Right? So let's look at the job. You wanna enter?
So we have a position that has existed here before, that we talked about last spring, that we wanted to take out of the para contract and create a separate hourly contract for. So what I've done is I've created a job description for that position and moved that person from the para to the hourly position. We did speak with the union. They were fine with this. We did speak with the employee, and they desired this. The goal here is to create more flexibility, so the para contract is a bit restrictive and not completely aligned with this student support specialist position that we have. And so therefore, by separating it and putting it into an hourly position, we're able to better utilize that person. They'd be here for eight hours a day versus, I think it's seven and a half for paras, which gives us a little more flexibility at the beginning and the end of the days. They would also have additional days throughout the year to do the professional development that they need to be better at this position. So, and then the other 180 days are the student days. So once again, we created this separate job description for you, and then afterwards, I can present the person, the job descriptions in front of you and hopefully accurate.
So are you, you have reports to the principal or designate?
Correct.
Not to a dean first?
So the designate would be the dean.
Okay.
Yep. So once again, we are trying to make our job descriptions more broad. Most of them said principal, but as we change them, we're making it principal or designate. That way, that is a possibility to do.
The, the days per year, well, I notice, I don't see them in the job description. I see it in the contract. Do those not typically go in here? Or do you want, just aren't flexibility for that?
I don't tend to put the days in the contracts. I mean, once again, I think things can change based on the teacher or para contract or how we decide we want to restructure a non-CBA contract. So I haven't put them in the job descriptions, but I can. That's an exact duplicate of other job descriptions.
No, that's okay. I just, I started talking, and then I saw it listed on the contract, and.
Yeah, whenever I create a job description, I take a previous job description, make a copy of it, and then adjust it to match the new information. So I use the same format for them all.
Gotcha.
So I know you said that they wouldn't, the person in this position would not necessarily follow the CBA.
Correct.
But do we have training and professional development allowed?
Correct. It's built right into their days. So there's 180 student days where they'll be doing the job, and then there's four professional development days added to that contract. My assumption, but I have not worked with anybody on this, would be one before school begins, one after school ends, and then two during the year for enhanced training based on what we're seeing as we progress. So that provides us with four built in, and it does say up to. So if we find we don't need up to four, we don't have to use them. This person's guaranteed 180 days with up to four additional days for professional development.
Okay, so first, I think we need to approve the job description because we're creating a new position, right? So would someone like to make a motion to approve the new position?
I move we approve the new job position for student support specialist job description.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Discussion? So even though we've had this position before, it was more, it was held by a para, and it didn't necessarily have all the responsibilities as listed. More work as many days?
Correct. And it wasn't aligned with what para's, the para contract is. So there was definitely some discrepancies and some concerns throughout the year. By separating, we resolved that problem.
Does anybody else have any questions about that?
I'm just, I'm not seeing where it says professional development days.
Right inside the contract. So if we look at the contract, terms and conditions, eight hours per day, 40 hours per week for 180 working days, and up to four professional days per year.
Okay, it's the plus four. Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. All right. Everybody good with the job description approval? Okay? Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie? We approved the job description. Now you want to nominate someone for that position?
I'd like to nominate Colleen Howard. She was a paraprofessional. She will now become the student support specialist if the board approves this position change. It would be for the eight hours a day, 40 hours a week, which is definitely beyond what paras would work in, so that's an increase of the number of hours. The days per year would be the 180 plus the four professional development days. She has those benefits that I've listed there. You can adjust those. I'm basing it off of what other hourly employees get, which is a sick day of 10 per year, accumulated up to 50, personal days of two, and emergency days are two. I then put all the benefits in there, with the exception of life insurance, which one, again, aligns with that. And then for the yearly rate of $19 an hour. And I did put 50/50 still, because we in the budget process did not develop this. So I'm gonna still continue to take from those two lines that she was taking from before, simply because that's where the money for this position is placed.
So you aligned the benefits to the paras?
I aligned the benefits to my hourly employees.
Okay. All right. All right, we get it. Okay. All right. Do you want to accept the nomination?
I move we accept the nomination of Colleen Howard for the position of student support specialist.
That's the current position.
Down below a special ed position. So this is at a hourly rate of $19 per hour to be paid for from the local operating budget. 50/50 from general ed, 50%, from general ed, 50% from special education. Benefits per the nomination form here. And this is for 180 days plus four, so 184 days per year.
Okay, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Okay, so the benefits reflect similar benefits to those of other hourly employees.
Hourly, non-CBA employees, correct. Those are pairs are hourly, but they're covered by the CBA.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Anyone second? I thought I heard a second. Okay, Kyle, one second. Sorry, I thought I heard.
I'm done.
Okay.
So.
All right. Yes, Kyle? And Debbie, yes? All right, that's done. Maybe somebody else was.
Oh, I already, you signed it.
Oh, I didn't.
Yes. It was Debbie's. So shall I go through this? The special ed hiring from the contract.
Yes.
Yes. So as I mentioned in our previous discussion, we are still at least six full-time paraprofessionals short, five of which are special needs. And as we know, we have to meet the special needs IEP accommodation requirements. So if a special ed IEP says that there needs to be a paraprofessional service provided, we are, need to do our best effort to get that done. As I mentioned, we're five of those short, ranked as second of special ed, and we potentially, based on these evaluations, could be as many as three more, which would bring us to eight special ed openings. We are continuing to advertise every way we know how. We've put it out on every service we can possibly think of, and we still are getting applications periodically. There is one potentially in the pipeline right now, but that still would mean we're seven short. So what Melissa has done is she started to work with one of the hiring organizations out there that helped us out last year to say, can we start looking for some contracted service providers? We do have some information on them, which of course is that they're going to be a little bit more expensive. bit more expensive. If you take a full-time para with benefits, it's slightly more expensive to hire them through the agency. So, you know, obviously, we're going to do the best we can to have ours, but also remember that there is a 30-day termination clause with these folks. So, if we were suddenly to get a burst of interest, which we never did replace the ones last year, right? We never got to that point. But if we were, for some reason, to get there, we could terminate these contracts and hire them with that. The most significant downside I can see to this is that we left one of the people last year, but we couldn't hire them because they worked for the company. We have a non-compete clause in the contract. So, that could be the downside is if they hire somebody on our behalf, and we really love them. We will work with them. I mean, one of the options that came up last year was possibly if we still maintained that contract with a different person, we'd hire them. So, once again, we'll figure it out if it comes along. I do recommend that the board give us permission to fill these slots as we can because, as you also know, we are under review by the state for compensatory services because of the lack of para professionals that we experienced last year. So, if there's a way for us to fill those gaps, we really want to show the state we're doing everything in our power to fill these. We're doing everything we can do. I could show dozens and dozens of postings on many, many different locations. But now, we'd also be able to show we're even going through an outside company, head on to company, to fill those positions for us. And I think that would go a long way if, when the state does come in and do some sort of review or audit on us based on this.
So, Rob, did Melissa tell us that we probably would be close to 50 if these paras, the six paras that we need were hired through the agency, that most likely we'd be $50,000 over the line?
Sure, yeah. If we, if we were to hire all of them for an entire year, we would probably exceed our budget on the order of about $50,000. Once again, the para budget is based on what we had for paras at the time of the last budget being created, which was short already. If you recall, we didn't know that we needed this many paras. So, yes, we'd be over, but it's quite possible we would have been over anyway just because the number of paras we need keeps growing. So, once again, that's a line that I'm always worried about. Last year, we did not exceed it despite our best efforts to do so. So, you know, once again, we still might come in under this year even with contracted services. We also, I want to remind you, I mean, we fill in six para positions, even though a head-on to company is going to be difficult. Right now, we're looking at one and a half.
So, okay, so the point is, if we do make a motion, that we want to talk about where the money will come from? So, either we'd be from fund balance, or we'd have to go into the account for students with disabilities?
Right. Even though, even though historically, we've had fund balance, that obviously is no indicator of what we're going to have next year.
Exactly.
But we have, we do our best to keep the fund balance, and we do have that, that account. So, are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
So, I move we authorize, Rob, to pursue this outside agency for the purpose of hiring para professionals as discussed to meet the needs, to meet the required needs of our special education students.
And then knowing that if it goes over that line, that we would have to fund?
Yep. And also knowing that if it goes over that, that line in our budget, that we can fund it. We hope to be able to fund it from our fund balance or our...
Students with disabilities.
Yes, that, the students with disabilities fund that we add money to historically every year.
Okay, good. We have a second?
Do we have a second?
And just to clarify, we're looking for six, we just approved six paras that you were looking for.
Correct. And you said for special ed purposes, which would not cover the regular ed. So, I don't know if you need to adjust that, or if you just want me to focus on special ed, which is the legal requirement. So, that's the thing we're trying to meet. So, if we don't fill the kindergarten position, we're not in violation of any law.
How does the board feel about that?
I think that we could, they can fill the kindergarten position at least.
Yeah, I think your first thing is to do what we're legally required to.
Agreed. That's what we've been hiring already. This kindergarten position's been open since a while ago. We keep bypassing it. We keep jumping over it and filling it.
And they can share paras, I'm sure, if they have to, right? Kindergarten, do they not have a para at all?
They have two.
Okay, so there could be some.
They possibly could, and especially since this year, we've said we're not going to use them for special ed purposes at all. Last year, we were. We're going to avoid doing that this year because that's not what you folks have hired them to do.
Right.
And it's not what the budget says we're doing with them. So, we're going to make sure we're staying true to everybody's desires this year.
Okay, all right. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. So, these, this panel contracts, this you want me to sign? These are all the pairs we just?
Those are all the pairs you just approved. I took them out of the pack to make it easier for you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, let me just, okay, so next you have, before we do the student handbook, can we just do the bus route quickly because I'm going to be silent, ladies and I won't be listening. Sorry.
So, we're going, oh, sorry. Okay, just a second. So, within, just got to get to the right sections. So, the district transportation contractor, which is Dale Transportation, has proposed bus routes for both the CBNA and the Stratford School for the 25, 26 year. They submitted that. It went to the transportation committee. The committee is fine with them, or was fine with me moving it forward to the whole board for review. I've inserted those into this. My recommendation to the board is that we approve those. They've already posted them as tentatively approved, which is what they do, or pending board approval. They have to do it every year because we never approve them prior to the co-ground school starting back up. So, they've already posted the co-ground route as, you know, pending approval, so.
Okay, so, does someone like to make a motion to accept the information from Dale according to the bus routes for this year?
I move we accept the proposed bus routes from Dale Transportation for the 25, 26 school years.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
Should I go back to it or skip to playgrounds?
Skip to playground.
Okay. Playground, project donation request. The Stratford Playground Project Committee comprised of parents, community members, volunteers has submitted a formal request for the board to accept the donation to support the development of the new school playground. The amount is $4,000. It did come from our graduating class of 2025. We donated the $4,000 to the committee, which is now donating it to our account for the purpose. I strongly recommend again that we accept that money for the purpose of moving that project along.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to accept that money for the project?
I move we accept the $4,000 from the, from the playground committee that was donated by the Stratford School class of 2025 for the purpose of replacing our playground and improving our playground.
Do we have a second? Oh, second? Discussion? I'd just like to, to also thank the playground committee for all the hard work that they've been doing. I mean, the fundraising, the touch a truck. They're really, I think it's, it's great for the community to see how hard they're working to raise the money for the funds because if you do have to ask for money, they're seeing how hard people, they've been working. So, good job. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, Eric?
Yes.
And Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
Lunch price adjustment. The New Hampshire Department of Education notified recently that we needed to have a minimum of a 10 cent increase to the regular price, school lunches for students. We had gone up by five cents. They're saying that until we meet the USDA's recommended amount, we have to go up by 10 cents a year. So, we'll continue to go up 10 cents a year minimum. You can always choose to go higher than that if you wish. But like I said earlier, the lunch prices this year went up by, USDA's prices went up by 20 cents. So, at 10 cents per year, we're going to probably continue to fall a little further and further behind. We're not actually going to catch up to that number, but I still, my recommendation would be to stay with the 10 cents. I think that a lot of families already struggle and don't need any more burden added to them. So, I recommend the 10 cent.
And the breakfast doesn't change?
Breakfast stays the same, and any other price will stay the same. You always have the right to change those prices. I'm just simply saying the one we have to change is the lunch price stays.
And for people to understand, this is, because we are, the federal government reimburses us for our free and reduced lunches. And the free lunches are reimbursed at $3.85?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so we're supposed to be inching our way, or 3.84, we're supposed to be inching our way up to the cost of reimbursement. So, that's why we have to keep going up. It's not our choice, it's what we have to do. All right, Eric? Oh, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjust the child lunch price to $3.145 for the 25, 26 school year.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Apparently, that's why we did this, that's why I did my discussion.
Yes.
All right. We've only been here for like 10 minutes or something. Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All right. Let's go back to student handbook.
Okay. So, the student handbooks for the 25, 26 school year have undergone comprehensive revision by both the schools and deans with support from their respective board chair teams and superintendent's office. Obviously, earlier tonight in our work session, the board went through that process as well. My recommendation is to accept those handbooks as revised during the work session earlier tonight and to get those into place before this cleared against.
Right. And they'll reflect some of the policies that we'll be working on will also be reflected in the handbook. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion? We have something new this year. The deans created a separate handbook for the elementary, PK through four, and then we have a middle school, five through eight handbook, and then we also have the staff handbook. So, would someone like to make a motion to accept all three handbooks as discussed during the work session with the edits we made?
We did go through the staff handbook.
Oh, did anybody else? We went through it quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
There weren't that many changes.
All right, that's right, that's right. So, I move we approve the student handbooks for all grades, the two different handbooks, and the staff handbook with the revisions made at our work session earlier this evening.
Can we have a second? Do we have a second? All right, discussion. I would like, before they're put online for the finished product with the revisions to be sent to the board, just to make sure that everything that we requested is there. Okay? Because we're trusting that everything we mentioned, it will be in the...
We'll try and have that done tomorrow so that we get it out to you by tomorrow evening. That'll be our goal, if we not by Friday morning.
I think, I mean, I think that they were like five and...
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, and then if people look through that, take your time, just look and see some of the highlights that we made, make sure they're changed, and if not, we're good to go. All right, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay.
CBNA student assignments, since the time of the publishing of this document, more have come in. We're up to seven at this point that I need for tonight.
These are new above the ones that we already knew.
Correct. These are people that have moved into the district or have gone from homeschool to back to school. So, once again, we had four, but now it's seven new students have requested enrollment in Playground Northwood Academy for the 25, 26 year. There will be budget impact. We did budget for five additional. We're now over that by two. But here's what I'll remind you, last year, on the first, when the first report came out to us for enrollment, we found that we had lost a couple of kids that moved away, and nobody told us. Or they had, I think one dropped out even potentially. So, we did have some adjustments last year, so I'm not in a worried state right now. I was worried last year, and I remember saying that at one of those early meetings, oh my goodness, we're over the budget. I'm not going to do that this year. Let's keep it, you know, calm and cool, and we'll see how things go. But if we are over, it is $20,000 a person.
Twenty-five, I think it's more than twenty-five.
It's over 20, it's over 20, but I don't remember the exact number, so...
It's like almost 24.
No, no, no.
It's like 20,000.
20,000 and change. If you're a special ed, you have to pay that additional fee.
That's an additional 7,000, so then it's almost 28,000.
So, once again, there's not much to talk about. They are residents, residency has been proven, and so therefore, I'm handing this over to Debbie for signature.
Okay, all right. Okay, I just want to make sure of the addresses myself before we do this.
Please, I like second and third checks.
Yeah. Okay. And you've, people have actually checked, and you have some type of residence proof?
So, we have a residency process that we go through. Whenever anybody registers to go for our school or co-ground, they have to show a certain number of documents. They have to fill out forms. They've done all that. April is double, April, Lori, maybe, and Adriana. I know they're working together now on things. They double-check and triple-check that information and then pass along the ones that are approved immediately.
All right, so I will, we don't have to approve these like a motion. I just, I just have to sign. All right. Next, we have ongoing and completed board tasks. I just want to look through this later. I just want to...
Well, this transition, the phase order at co-ground.
Yeah, like I said, some people transition in and out of our school.
Okay. Rob, do you have an update, that corrected copy of the bell schedule, please?
It's, what's also in the handbook, it's my understanding.
I don't think, yeah, it is. It's just broken up. It's like how it's like all compiled into one machine.
I did print it, because I was sad to hear after I'd sent that to you that that was the wrong guy. All right, ongoing completed board meeting. I hope I put it in there. I'm still trying to find it.
Page 40.
What, page 40?
They already think it.
Okay, perfect. There we go, it was on the back. Okay. Any questions about any of those? We did have a very busy summer.
Anybody have any questions?
How did, oh, maybe that's your other update, but the locker rooms, were you guys able to tie this over to...
So, we just went in today. We hadn't got them done yet, and Jeff and I were talking about it, like we've got to get on this. So, yes, our plan is to get some things done, taking some measurements today. We're going to order some covers for the chair holders and also figure out how to get them more neatly on there because there's a lot of empty or obstructed space that can be filled. So, we're working on that and getting the covers forum and getting those into the cap as planned. The tables, we're going to keep in the, in the boys' locker room, but we're going to stack them in a more neat, into that alcove. And we're going to work with the drama department to get their stuff stacked back, all the way back by that shower like they're supposed to be. And once they are, we're going to cover all that with a curtain. And we think that that will make, oh, volleyball stuff in the girls' room is off the floor. The boys' room is still on the floor, but they're working on that. Our hope is to have that off the floor before the start of school as well.
That's the rec one, right?
I think it's the school's gym class ones.
Oh, okay, because we did for the athletic committee, we could go in, and they do have the nets hung up?
Yes.
And they have like the poles on brackets off the floor?
And when I went into the boys' room and saw them sitting on the floor, I said, why don't we do the exact same thing? And he's like, you know, he uses athletic funds for the other. I said, we'll put it into facilities, just, just get it done. So, we're going to get those off the floor. So, once again, yes, the athletic rooms will be in a much better shape than they've been in the past. That doesn't mean they're perfect. It doesn't mean we're not going to have more ideas and more thoughts about what to do moving forward, but it'll be a vast improvement over where we've been.
It's all that drama stuff too, that's in there, the stage.
In the boys', in the boys' bag.
Stage things.[1579.33]
So we're going to cover all that, so if we stack it all in the other way, I think it can be stacked. We can cover the whole thing, put a bar across and put curtains up that will block that from view and make it feel like the locker room's a wall shorter, but it's still going to be a locker room free of debris.
It's very crowded in there, there's lots of stuff. So, and do you want to also, as you're, I don't know, is it on there about the freezer? Do you want to give people an update about that freezer?
Sure, so, but it's not on the list, no. So the freezer update is that it broke in the last day of school. We gave away all the food that was in there because it had started to defrost. And when we spoke to the food experts, they said you can't refreeze it. So we ended up donating most of it to the food pantry, all the stuff that they wanted, we donated to the food pantry. We gave away the rest of it to staff, and I don't think any of it went to waste. But there was nothing else we could do, we had to get rid of it. It took a while, but when E and E was able to get in here, they were able to figure out what was wrong and to repair the system enough to make it work again. What they were clear about is that this freezer is way past end of life. At one point, you're using a freon in there that's no longer even allowed. They did convert it a while back, the problem is that many of the components are still that old systems components. And those components really can't even be found anymore. So he said, his worry for our district is that something's going to break that's going to take weeks, months, or potentially not even be able to be purchased. And if that happens while we're waiting for the part to come in or finding out that we can't, we have to replace it, we would have to bring a refrigerated freezer truck on site, and those are very expensive, you pay for them on a weekly basis. So his recommendation is that we replace both the fridge and the freezer as soon as the budget can be adjusted to do so.
That must be very expensive.
When I talked to him, he just roughly told me that he thought we were talking thirty thousand or less versus what I was fearful of, because he said ours is actually a relatively smaller unit than a lot of other organizations. But once again, he said, please don't quote me on that because that's not the quote. So I am waiting for the official quote, I don't have it as of yet. I've been getting them from E and E for different things, like I just shared with them. The two heat units in the gymnasium would be about ten thousand dollars each. The bigger problem than the money, in my opinion, is the time, four to five days each. So that means shutting the gym down for eight to ten days. But once again, you know, that's, that's what's on the table, the facilities has to talk about it and figure out what they want to recommend. But yes, I try to think, was there something else? It was the heat units. Oh, the intercom, yes. Our intercom system, we just got notified by our intercom provider, Williams, that our intercom system will stop being provided parts and stuff by Bogdan, which is the company that made it, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So on that date, they stopped selling it and providing it. They said they'll do the best they can to provide parts for another ten years, but they can't guarantee anything. So I've given the facilities committee some recommendations from Williams about some staged approach to the replacement. If we were to replace everything, it would be like a hundred thousand dollars, but they gave us a much more effective way of approaching it. And he seemed very knowledgeable what he was talking about, that he'd be able to do some hybrid stuff that would allow us to do a much lower dollar value and also to hold it off for another year or two while we figure out how to pay for it. So that was the third system that this summer we.
So for the freezer, if we have, we can actually, if we have any money left over in the food service, we can use that to buy the, I mean, I think, rather than the general budget, because we can't, we can't take any excess funds from the food service budget, that has to stay there. We can give them funds, but we can't take any, so, but we can use that money to buy equipment.
Right, that's how we bought the dishwasher a few years ago. And before the dishwasher, I think it was already a thirty thousand, and the dishwasher, I think, was about fifteen. So I think ballpark, we're talking about fifteen. I know the refrigerator or freezer will be more than that, but still, once again, if you can maybe hack off half or three quarters of the price, that's a good route to go.
We could always use that capital.
That's true.
IB fund.
Is that something that we should be putting up to bid?
That's, that's completely up to the board how you want to handle things. E and E is giving us, because they're our contractor that does all the work on all of these systems.
Or at least, at least get a full piece.
Correct, that would be, that would be your choice on how, facilities, I, I've sent them what I know. I'm waiting for feedback from them. You can always say, no, we're going to stick with the company that we know and we respect and we want to use. Or you can say, no, we want to go out for bid and see if there's a better product or a cheaper product out there. Once again, that's really up to, first, facilities to come back with a recommendation and then the board to give me a decision on. I'm not in a rush right this second, everything's working. Everything's working, so.
And because you're on facilities, because you just talked about the paving and the water sheds, you could.
Sure, so.
I'm sorry, I thought you were already kind of.
Well, I kept getting asked about more things, so. But yeah, here we go, this is an other item that I thought was just important for you to know, that we haven't been sitting around twiddling our thumbs this summer. Alright. So the water lean-to project, we stripped the roof, stripped off all the T-eleven. We found some problems in certain places, like one wall wasn't even nailed to the ground. We fixed a lot of that, and we were able to re-site it, put a new door in, re-roof it. The roof has now got ice and water shield under the first half of it. It's got new drip edge, we flash, I've learned how to flash, I've never flashed. Learned how to flash the wood trim around the front. And once again, it's, it's basically a done project, I'm not sure if he's mounted the camera yet, I'd have to go over and look. But we had to get a block for that to go on the siding that the camera would then mount to, and there was an alarm that had to have the same thing. We definitely did not re-mount the AED to the back of that building, I was like, we're not doing that. I don't want to have random holes and all that, so we actually are mounting that in another part of the back, which is closer to the athletic fields. That will be mounted there. So once again, we're working on all that, but the lean-to is now complete. I'm in the process right now, Adriana's working on it for me, to put together the request that we're going to send to be reimbursed from the IMB account.
So let's just make this clear, we, meaning Rob, worked on the lean-to, Rob.
Well, my hope, I actually want to be really clear, Greg and I were as sweaty and nasty as any two people can be for about a week. And we did it, I think it's in great shape, I think it's going to last you for a long time. I compliment the facilities committee on your color choice. I really think it looks sharp, and I think it's the way we should go with other outbuildings as we proceed. If we decide to redo the garage, so on and so forth, I love that color arrangement, I think it's much better than white, that gets dirty really easily. But yeah, no, Greg, Greg is amazing, I cannot praise him enough for all of his work, or John for all of his work. I mean, this building is insanely better than it's been in the past.
And let me say, the floors look so clean and shiny, and they've been painting.
Yep, every hallway, a lot of classrooms.
Really clean.
And once again, that's John and his group.
Different from last summer and this summer.
Right. Greg also removed the old water fountains that were no longer functioning on that part of the building. And we've replaced them with the three that you approved for the water bottle filling stations. Lovely, I loved how he did it, he was able to patch concrete, and I mean, just, like I said, the things that he's able to do that we don't have to hire somebody to do is absolutely night and day from where we were before. AC repair in the main office, it broke, he fixed it, but I'm like, okay, keep going. We stripped and waxed all the halls and rooms.
It was so good.
We painted all the hallways and many of the classrooms, we painted all the exterior doors and frames. After I saw it, I was like, I wish it was a little less bright, it feels like a brighter red than I would have liked. But it's good for now, and it will last a couple of years, then we'll paint them again and maybe a slightly different shade. We did add an emergency light to room twenty-nine, which was a recommendation from a previous inspection. We moved my office door so that it was better situated, working on painting the SAU walls that are painted. Most of it's that wallpaper that you get with mobile homes. But we do have multiple walls that have been added, all of those are being repainted right now, and they're doing a great job.
That's wonderful.
Assembled tons of furniture, to be honest, tell you where that was, stripped and repainted the Spartan statue, you haven't seen.
I saw it.
Grand reveal. It looked horrible, I went up to John and I said, John, do you think your kids could, because he has a bunch of students working for him this summer? I said, do you think they can fix, they pressure washed it, they sanded it, they did all sorts of it. It really does look awesome, so it's great to see it rejuvenated, it was kind of embarrassing. We mounted the volleyball equipment, we patched many spots on the roof, many ceiling tiles replaced and painted. We've sealed so much stuff on the roof, our hope is, we got it, that's our hope, fingers crossed. But we're going to keep an eye out, any ceiling tile with a stain, we're going to get up on the roof trying to figure that out. We moved tons of equipment all over the place, all the stuff that needed to be moved, adjusted door closures throughout the building because they were all over the place. We got those mounted, whiteboards, conducted the emergency light test, which we used to pay a company thousands of dollars to do. We do it now internally for pretty. Replaced emergency lights and batteries based on that test. We are scheduling the inspection with the fire department, so we're going to have that done. We're keeping all of our fields mowed and weed whacked, I don't know if you noticed, everything is weed whacked this year, everything is mowed.
Isn't the grass in front of the S.A.U. though?
Oh, I forgot, did I? So in front of the S.A.U., I was so tired, not, the crushed rock wouldn't have bothered me, but it was all the stuff growing through the crushed rock. And so I just went to, sorry, I'm going to get the name in a minute, White. Gosh.
Is it a person?
Uh, White, last name White, he does all of our. Will, Will.
Oh, Bill, yes.
Will, gosh, I can't believe, I forgot that, I apologize, Will, if you're watching.
He went to Princeton High School too.
I bet that's Natalie texting me his name. I don't know, I just had this total brain collapse, but anyway, Will has done an amazing job this summer with our, with our outdoor maintenance and weed whacking.
I heard he's very hardworking.
He's amazing, he's absolutely amazing. I, that's Natalie saying, yes, it was. I didn't even look at my phone, Natalie, don't shoot. But anyway, so he did, I said, can you just make this rocks look better, next thing you know, they're gone, it's soil, it's seeded. Now, there are some weeds coming up, we'll go through that part out, but yeah, I'm so much happier with it the way it is. So we've got more to do, but we're getting there. Concrete ring, do you remember that manhole cover that kept sinking? The ground would sink in and suddenly we'd have a huge sinkhole?
Where?
It's out by where the septic pump station is, there's a manhole cover outside, and every six months or so, we go out there and there's a sinkhole. The concrete ringed the whole thing.
This and that.
Yeah, did a great job. We cleaned out the garage and reorganized the first floor, they still have the second floor to do, I believe.
They cleaned out the, they cleaned up.
And they changed all the fluids and greased all the equipment, which, remember, how much did we spend sending that equipment down to another place? They cut back the tree line from the fence, I actually did that, but anyways. I cleaned the dam intake several times, I've been there every time, so yeah, but that's a fun job, you guys should come and join sometime.
Kevin is down there all the time.
We're, we're hopefully going tomorrow to do another cleanup because it's been a couple of weeks. Technology, I don't understand all this, I got it, I mean, I know it's done, I've seen him working his butt off as well. I mean, I can't say enough for the work that Jay has done with the technology over the course of the summer. He's rewired the server rack, he can read it, he rewired the server rack and removed the old equipment.
Did you put this in the, in the minutes?
I can give it to her.
I think this would be good to have in the minutes, because it would be good to reflect on next year, because next year we'll forget everything. And then we can say, well, how can we get some?
He crafted that time, that timesheet system that's going to save us like ten thousand dollars a year. He added software to the management system, he added all new and existing hardware to the inventory management, set up a P.O. system for finance. Ordered all the equipment that needs to be ordered for this coming year, almost all of it. He planned, deployed, tested the whole network and the infrastructure, and we're still in the process of beta testing some things, but he is kicking butt taking names there. The voice phone system has been installed, or will be by the twenty-second, it's final date. They're also looking to install two of the seven smart board interactive displays, we'll get five more as time permits. Plan to deploy a new Chromebook community migration system and software licenses for new for next year. So just tons of technology, tons of facilities, and you can just see it by walking around, it's truly.
The building looks beautiful, I just have to say, the work ethic of people working here this summer. It's just, you can see it, there's such a difference, and that really personnel makes the difference. Huge difference, we, to get all this done.
That's a lot.
This is amazing, this is great, thank you very much, hardworking people, we appreciate you.
That's awesome, and then, so paving is done over here, right?
I think paving's done all the way around except for cracked ceiling. When I mentioned it to them, they said, yeah, we've got, that's coming up. As far as, I'm not sure if they're done cleanup, I see a lot of edges and stuff like that, so that. I know they said they were going to take through Thursday, today's Wednesday, so I'm assuming they're coming back tomorrow to do whatever it is they still need to do. But yeah, I haven't actually spoken to them since Tuesday, it was the last time I spoke, so.
Okay, so, next, public forum discussion. Remember we talked about having a public forum? And we wanted to have that likely for a budget discussion, before we start contracts, all that kind of thing. So we can look at our calendar, you have right here where we see the future board meetings. Rob is actually hoping that we can handle the August twenty-seventh, that's why this is so heavy, this meeting. But if we look at maybe like the September twenty-fourth or October eighth, because we do get.
When it starts, when do budget start?
Second meeting in October.
That would be the twenty-second, so we would want it before that, so, I mean, September tenth might be too early, right? Because we really want to advertise this, get this pushed out. So what do you think about September twenty-fourth or October eighth? We could do it, you know, we could figure out a time and do it for like an hour, whenever our meeting starts. Have a public forum, and then we can go to our meeting, so we don't do two nights in a row.
When is?
Open House?
Yeah, when is Open House?
The sixteenth, I think, so probably chime, I think I saw it on the website today.
I think Natalie's typing it as we speak.
I think it says on the, I think I saw it on the.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking if Open House, we're just able to say, hey, this is coming up.
Come to the twenty-fourth, maybe then?
Yeah.
Alright, so you want to look at the twenty-fourth?
Is that a Wednesday?
These are all Wednesdays.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so these are our regular meetings, so we would just say, well, what time do we want to start? You want to do it like at six to seven, or five-thirty to seven, or, and then we would go to our regular meeting.
I, I think, I think we try six to seven because this is a new thing.
Yeah.
And that would take the place of our non-public, but September sixteenth, Open House.
Okay, so, so twenty-fourth, if we did something like we did last time, where we did a meeting three last time, you were there, right? So where we sort of, we were in the library and we were mingling and introducing ourselves, we could then, you know, invite people.
Yep.
We can have like maybe a little sign or something, yeah, and then.
So six to seven for the?
The twenty, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Well, it would be a public forum.
For a public forum.
And it would more be, we're just listening, right? That's what they wanted us to do.
I, I think.
That was a suggestion, right, to have a listening session?
I, I think so, I think it would also be good if we had some information on hand, like the sort of thing, the projects we've been doing.
Okay.
You know, because it goes, it shows, because in addition to what we asked for, or what was asked of us, whenever it was last, around, just after budget season.
Right.
During budget season, we were doing a lot of discussion about how we were changing, like what we're doing with the facilities, how we're changing that. So it'd be a good update, I think, for people to hear about how we use the facilities fund.
Okay. Maybe we can have some handouts.
See, yeah.
We could have, because I guess the whole thing I thought, since it's only an hour, was to invite people in and listen to them.
Yeah.
To get their thoughts about what they want, like if we're looking at, as we prepare our budget, right? Funds, as we look at contracts, even about curriculum, about whatever. You know, possible warrant articles people might be interested in, things like that, like just any type of thing that people are interested in, that we would take that feedback, and then if we could apply some of it, if it makes sense to budgeting or whatever, we would do so. Yeah?
Yeah.
So we can, I mean, we have, we could tease this out, you know, how we're going to advertise it.
Yeah.
But as long as we have our date right now, then maybe we could finalize it on the, on the tenth, we could sort of, like, put together a blurb that we could advertise, because we really want to push this. We don't just want school, people, which we love the school families, but we want the entire community. So that when it's budget season and contract season and all those things, we have given people an opportunity to speak. And so people will know that they have that opportunity, so they can't really say.
It's weird, it's like it could be in the community calendar, which is due in two days, if the date, if the date.
The date, yes. That would, that would. Do we want to, what do we want, it's a, it's a public forum to.
Public listening session.
A public listening, the school board listening session.
Yep, based on feedback.
Yes, to, to, to hear whatever the, the public would like to, to speak on, whether it's budget items, upcoming contracts, curriculum, any, any school topic that they would like to speak about. You know, you guys can work, figure out, you don't understand the put where it goes about jetway and stuff for.
So I'm assuming you want me to advertise it through my methods as well, right? Our school's Facebook, Alma, et cetera. So could you send me whatever it is you come up with for final language so that I know what you put out there?
I'll CC, we'll CC you on the submission to the community calendar, that'll be what goes out to the community calendar.
Okay, we're good on that? Okay, and we can, I mean, you probably, it will come out at the beginning of September. I don't think, maybe September tenth, we can finalize like exactly what's actually put out on the Facebook page and.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So they'll share with me, but then I'll wait until September tenth.
I, I think so, because if you're sending things out too early, nobody will come, they'll forget about it. They need, you know, I think that's close, it's a bit tight. Alright, so correspondence, did we get any correspondence?
Not that I'm aware of, that was a spam.
Spam, bin.
I know.
Bin, bin.
Just like, market as like.
So, so I marketed a spam on my personal, but then I went into, because I'm the coordinator for that group. I went into the group and there's no way to market a spam within the group, and I think it's because each person has to make that decision for themselves. So that's what I was going to recommend to you, if you ever do get those types of advertisements, just say block on your own.
Okay.
And I think what that'll do is over time, it'll block, like, I don't think I'm going to get bins anymore because I've blocked it.
I don't ever want anymore bins.
Well, I think we've gotten three in a week, it's like, they're persistent, aren't they?
Yes.
There was, I think, maybe you're bringing up later, but there was one about activity, I just left.
Oh, Rob responded to that, following what we had decided, asking like if it's for cost, if it's, if it's nonprofit, if there's no cost involved, you've talked.
That one's, that one's over with, but I do have another one that just came in, but once again, that's under others, so you'll always hold that. It wasn't, I don't think, sent to.
Okay, so we just talked about the community calendar, so you guys know what we're going to do about that? We just talked about.
Yep, and I, I actually, if, I'd like to mention this list in the community calendar and put this list on the website.
Yes.
So that we can just point people and say, hey, this has been going on, all this good stuff.
And we did it internally, other than the paving type of thing, but, you know.
Yep.
We did, well, the last, the last article we had, the stuff that was on capital reserve, like the watershed and the.
Yeah.
That was the number.
So this could just be in-house.
Yeah, in-house, yep, in-house.
If there's other things, see, this was my just effort to quickly identify, Greg added some stuff, Jay added some stuff, so this is quickly just us. We wanted to give you something tonight saying, look, we've been really busy this summer, we've gotten a lot of this stuff checked out. If you think of other things you want me to elaborate on or to add to that list, just let me know, or I can even share the document with you. That way you can adjust it the way you see fit, would you like me to do that?
I, I'm, I think there's a heck of a lot of good stuff here, that if, if we just, listed, I'm happy with that.
Alright, community, committee updates, alright, so we have policy committee, you have committee policies, plus we want to make sure, you have the wellness committee, wellness policy, that addition to that, and then we'll comment on the dress code.
I can ask you a quick question from Natalie, she wants to know at the open house, if you folks would like to have your own space, like a table or?
Yeah, I think last year we were in the library during the book fair, but it was kind of like this awkward, like, kind of stuck in a corner, so, yeah. You want to have your own table?
Like, just something where we can. Like, just something where we can greet people if we're trying to promote them coming the following.
Okay.
And we can kind of, we don't all have to be there the whole time. We can kind of take like-
Sign up.
Ship, sir, whatever.
Thank you.
Yes, that's great. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you, Natalie.
Alright, so-
You can put your outside of the library, which is-
Policy, should we just go one at a time?
I think so.
Okay. So, we'll kind of go in order in, uh, so page 43, um, I'm sorry, I missed page.
41, yeah.
Yeah, page 41. Let's skip without a couple. This one's required, um, and it's the New Hampshire rental bill, right? And it is simply just copied and pasted in here. So, um-
Do you wanna just do?
Don't need to involve-
Well, why don't we, this one, I think, needs to just be moved to accept, since it's required.
With that, with that.
Rather than doing first reading and second reading. If do people agree with that? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, you wanna just do this one separately, because it's-
It might be a couple of those actually, but that's fine.
Yeah, well, we can just go through, we'll just go through each one. So, yeah, so I make a motion that we accept for first and second reading. Policy AB, the New Hampshire rental bill, upright.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, discussion. So this is mandated, it is now law, and, um, we also have this included in our student handbook as well.
Posted on the school website. Every place it's supposed to be, right?
Okay, alright, so let's just, Eric.
Yes.
Katrina.
Yes.
Kyle and Debbie. Yes, done. Okay. Next, alright, joint loss management committee.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Yes, please.
So, we had something here called the safety committee, um, but we are supposed to have a joint loss management committee. It's one of those things that's required. Now, they've been doing the basic functions. We wanna make sure the name gets changed properly and that we added those, all that stuff that's in green, to be very clear about how this has to operate. So we're supposed to meet at least quarterly, with the first meeting before, being before the beginning of the student's school year. Um, we have to have these different things in there. So we just wanted to clarify this, get it more aligned with what is modern and considered current practice. We have to actually update, uh, the department, I think it's Labor or, I don't remember. There's one of the departments. I've got an email from them saying, can you give me the minutes of these meetings? Can you give me this, this, and this? And really, we can't. So we need to be even more in compliance with that, and that's what this policy does.
Can we just make a motion to accept this, um, for totally, you have a second, unless people want to, you know, work some more on it?
Alright, I move we accept policy EV joint loss management committee for first and second reading.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Discussion. Okay, Eric.
Yes.
Jess, Katrina.
Yes.
Kyle and Debbie. Yes. Okay, next.
Alright, so EGAA technology internet adding in Chromebook, that we use policy purpose. So this one, um, Jay and Rob, um, put together, you can see that the highlighted revision.
So, all the stuff that's yellow was, um, suggestions that need to be added by, for Jay in order for us to be sending Chromebooks home with kids. That's really what started the impetus of this. I then used AI to combine our current with what he was proposing, to assemble it into one document. Uh, so that's what you see in front of you, is the product of trying to make our existing combined with the new components that we need to have in place.
Alright, so we should make a motion first and then have discussion.
Okay, I'd like to send this back to the committee, to be honest with you. There's so many problems with this one that, I mean, it's up to you. Did you really review this?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, then do, make a motion.
So, I move that we accept EGAA technology internet Chromebook, except for use policy purpose. Do you just wanna do first reading?
Okay, yes.
For first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, discussion. Um, I was, I don't know, if everybody else has read this carefully, um, okay. Number 15.
Page 41.
Yeah. Attempts to bypass disable circumvent district security measures filtering systems or monitoring software. So, last year, and it's continuing, kids play games. They, they will just type in the game, and it's actually, from what Jay said, it's sort of like going around the fil, the filtering system. I say get a better, stronger filtering system. But, so I wanna know if something like that, if the kids, because they all do it, it's not just one person, um, what's gonna happen there? Is that a violation?
Yes.
Or is that, okay, so-
It says unacceptable use. The district has the right to take disciplinary action, remove computer and networking privileges, undertake legal action for any activity characterized as unethical, unacceptable. Unacceptable use activities constitute but are not limited to any activity through which any user, and then it's 1 through 18.
So, okay, so if a child is playing a game, cuz they just type it in the, the search bar, a game, is that going around the filtering system? And is that a violation when they, you have the entire school?
Well, this is number 17, says use of district technology for gaming, social media.
I, I will, this is, unless this is, the filtering system is gonna be changed, or teachers can actually see every child's computer, um, it, it will to me be subjective, and it will be, maybe the kids that aren't as stupid will be, cuz I, I don't know.
Every, every disciplinary practice that exists in mankind is dependent upon it being observed, and people being consistent in their practices. This is no different.
Right.
If the teacher is not properly monitoring all the computer screens, as they probably should.
Right.
But if they're not, then, once again, you're gonna find inconsistencies. There's nothing I can do about that. All we can do is train our staff to say, look, if kids are on the computer screen, you need to be monitoring what they're doing.
Right. Okay.
If they do, and they catch them, that would be one of those disciplinary consequences that would go to an administration. Would very first time they're caught mean they lose everything? Probably not. First time would most likely be a teacher-student conversation. Second time might be the teacher calling home and talking to a parent, just like you see with the tier one stuff, right?
Right, right.
But eventually, if it becomes repeated on other occasions, the teacher's gonna send it to the office as a tier two event, and then it's gonna become more serious. At some point, though, they most likely would have their network access eliminated, so they couldn't use the device. Just remember, that's gonna impact their academics, because almost every teacher has our network as part of what they do, as part of their curriculum. So once again, I don't know how I could word that differently.
I, I just, I don't know either. I guess I'm just looking at it as, um, alright, let's just say, I sit in the front of the room, so I have more likelihood they're gonna see me. I'm, if I sat in the back corner, I'm still on the games, because they're all doing the games, or as I-
What's your answer?
I don't know. I just feel like we should be filtering, so they can't do the ga, I mean, I under, I, I agree with trying to disable things or doing security measures. But, when I asked Jay about blocking games, he said they can't.
So, once again, that's a different conversation. That doesn't mean we don't have it in this policy. That during budget season, you ask for us to come forward with a pricier, cuz it will be,
Right.
a more comprehensive filtering system that's going to have more capabilities. Jay has complained about the filtering system without a doubt.
Right.
But once again, it's what we have.
Right.
If you wish to have a better system, more robust system, all you can do is ask.
Right.
And I will bring it forward as part of the budgeting, and it could be in place as early as next July 1st, based on the budget process.
Okay.
But once again, I don't think I'd wanna take that out. I, I think I want them to know, you're not supposed to be gaming.
Right.
We're gonna do the best we can-
Right.
-to enforce that, but I will agree with you, there will be inconsistencies.
Right.
Without a doubt, there'll be inconsistencies. But, and we'll do the best we can. But once again, the, I think what this is allowing Jay to do is to say, this is really what his big thing was. He goes, I'm gonna give them all these devices, this is your device. I want them to know that if they're doing inappropriate things with it, they can lose that device. And I want the parents and the student to sign something saying that. And that's what part of this is, right? Is that in the, it's the acceptable use, that they're gonna have to sign, the parents are gonna have to sign. That gives us the ability to say, we're not gonna have a fight over this. You sign this saying you understand it. So before we put this device in the fifth grader's hands, we're gonna have both the student and the parent sign saying, we understand what we're supposed to use this for. So if down the road, we try multiple efforts to get them to comply and they don't, we can take the device and nobody can say, you never told us. No, you signed a document in order to receive this device. So I agree with what Jay's trying to do here, which is to give us more teeth if we need them down the road.
Okay.
Um, should this, should the title of this say student? Cuz this, I'm assuming this is very geared towards students.
I imagine it's geared toward staff as well. There, there's staff in there as well, for sure.
So, um, I, on the first page, number five, all messages or data proposed, stored, sent, or received are to remain the private property of the district. Does that, I mean, there's some right-to-know stuff that comes up sometime.
But that's, but that's covered under a law. So what we're saying is it's owned by us. What's happened in the past is a teacher creates something, or a student creates something on our network, and that says, that's mine. But the reality is, it's not. If you create anything on a district network using our resources and taxpayer dollars,
Yep.
it belongs to the district. And what that prevents is a teacher saying, or a parent, or somebody else saying, I'm leaving this district and I'm taking my stuff with me and you can't stop me.
Okay.
In fact, we can. That's ours.
Yep.
That's considered work product. And the same thing for the students. They couldn't say, I was doing this and I'm not gonna let you see it. No, you were doing it on our network. We have full access to that. That doesn't mean we're searching. It, it would be a need, right? Something comes up, we get a complaint, we get whatever, we're gonna go and search. But that's, I, I just, that's why this is in there.
Okay.
Because people with the passive thought, no, it's my property. The answer is, no, it's not. It's the district's property.
Okay, I just wanted, wanted to make sure we weren't, that it wasn't disregarding the right-to-know law. That is separate.
Yeah, right-to-know is all powerful. I can say, you know anything about it, they ask where they get it.
I have another, um, number eight, district grade 49.
49, district grade 49.
Financially responsible for damage, loss, or theft of district devices.
Yep.
When it comes to students, um, losing or damaging, I noticed in another section, it was $300.
Could be up to.
Um, $250 to $300, and will put you on a payment plan. I, we are a public school. If we, it's like saying, if you lose your math book, you can't do math anymore. We use the technology to teach. We can't financially charge somebody if a child breaks or loses a device. I would say you lose your privilege to take it home. I would lose that. But, it, these are children. They lose things. Sometimes they trip, they, something gets damaged. It, it, to say that they're gonna be paying, their parents are gonna be paying $250 to $300, I, I-
So, once again, think about it. If you lose a textbook, you pay us for it.
Yep.
And, and just, all I'm saying is if you lose something-
Yeah, but if I don't return a library book, I would get a bill for it.
But $300?
But guys, that's, so if they don't sign that release,
Yeah.
they don't get one. That doesn't mean they're not gonna use them in school, but it means they're not gonna be taking one home with them.
Right.
So I'm just making sure we stay.
I mean, it's, it's, that, it's in the, it's actually in the student handbook. Like, our, yeah, um,
in the handbook, it says, for $300.
Once again, we think, we think the average price right now would be around 200, but we don't know for sure, so we're putting a buffer in there that's going to allow us to charge with the actual cost of the replacement device.
So then what if the parents can't pay it?
What if they can't pay for the textbooks? What do we all, I mean, Debbie, I mean, you've been trading for things for years. We charge people for food and they don't pay us back.
Yeah, so on page 7-
So if it'll pay you back, it's fine.
Well, right, what am I gonna do?
Care, care of school property. Students are responsible for the proper care of all books supplied, electronic devices, and furniture provided by the school. Books should remain covered throughout the school year. Students will be required to pay for the loss or the image of school property, or its replacement, and be billed for such images through the office.
Alright.
So that's like then in the student handbook.
And I guess I, I would look at it as-
It's just like putting a do, a dollar amount on it.
I think seeing the 250 or 300 and we're putting them on a payment plan was shocking.
Well, and like, I remember Jay talking about, like, you know, students repeatedly damaging them.
Right.
And it's like, the repair costs fix them. If a parent is having to pay to repair the devices, I assume that the child's gonna be spoken to and probably help responsible more for it, other than just, okay, there's, there's no repercussion. Okay, here's your fixed computer.
Right.
And you can do it again.
So, so if a computer drops and it's broken, they have to pay for it. Is that what we're saying?
That's what it says, correct. Just like if I was walking home with my bookbag, and I decided to horse around with my friends, and I put my bag down, and it ended up falling in a puddle or being in a puddle, and all my books in my bag got wet, and I came back to school with these swollen nasty books. We would be charging you $35 for this, $85, cuz books are very expensive now, textbooks, right? That whole bag might cost $400 to replace everything that's in it. That's what we're saying here. You've gotta be responsible. And once again, the parent can say, don't bring the device home. They don't have to. If I've got plenty of technology in my house, I don't need you to bring your Chromebook home. So as a parent, I could say to the kid, don't bring it home. And then that's-
So this is only, this is only if they bring it home. So if they're in school and they trip, they drop the computer, we're charging them $250, cuz they damaged it?
Once again, it, I think a lot of it's gonna be repaired. But the answer is yes. If they damage it, like, the thing that happens in school the most, I mean, that's not common. What you just described, what's common is the key popped off. Well, what were you doing to pop three keys off today? That's where we might have to pay $15 per key to get it put back on, and the parents suddenly get a bill for $45 to repair the device. The answer to your question is yes. We can send them a bill. Now, once again, guys, I mean, seriously, the bookbag incident I just described, the food, our, our food bills, I've got several parents that owe two, three, four, $500.
Right.
And, and even don't pay us. So it's, I think it's gonna be just like anything else that happens in the district, right? We do the best we can to hold people accountable, to say, hey, you owe us this money, to work with people. I, I develop, uh, payment plans on food all the time. So you have people that pay us $10 a week or five bucks a week. So I think that's what we'd be doing. We'd be saying, alright, what can we do here? How do we get that paid back? And if ultimately they say, I'm not gonna pay you, I mean, it's up to the board. I can't go to small claims court without your permission, so.
If people don't, yeah, if people, you're not gonna deny it to them.
My question is, is for, like, the middle school ages, if they don't bring it home, is there a means for, if, like, they, as far as having it charged for the next day? Like, do they still have charging cards?
They will. They'll have the means to do what they need to do for the kids that can't take them home.
Okay. I was just, I know, like, in elementary school, that's just, that's wrong and they have it.
I think it's K to 3 that's not taking them home, if I remember correctly. So it will be, whatever is needed to maintain those devices, you know, readily available.
Um, is there, do, I guess, more, I guess, trying to figure out, so, cuz in here, groups together, kind of grades four and five,
Yep.
and then six through eight. So, is grade four and five, is more of like an optional take-home situation, or what is?
Yep, so you can see, they may, right, they may be assigned these devices with additional responsibilities, including daily charging, transport, protective cases, and use only in common areas of home, not bedrooms. Device use is prohibited after established bedtime hours. We recognize, we don't actually control that at home. But what we wanna do is give the parents the support to say, you're not supposed to be using this device at 10 o'clock at night in your bedroom, instead of sleeping.
Right.
So we wanna provide the parents, just like the state did with, uh, cell phones. We wanna provide the parents with some of the backup that they might need. They could communicate to us, hey, my child was abusing this last night. We then have the teeth to go and say to the child, well, hey, you're on the, you're at risk of losing this now. Right? So we can help back parents up with that particular policy. Where six to eight is that it's really, students have that increased independence, right? They're gonna take them home, they're gonna have a lot more flexibility with it. And, and hopefully, they're gonna treat them properly and, you know, use integrity and everything else. And once again, we can't enforce that. All we can do is encourage it and then hold them accountable if they don't.
Okay, so right here, sixth grade, it says, avoid social media and gaming during school hours. That's what it says, avoid. It doesn't say, as it said, which I interpreted, number 15, um, they do ga, they go on games?
Students are expected to demonstrate academic integrity.
And they should.
I, I think, I think it was just a, it, it flowed. So what would you like it to say?
No, I'm just, I agree with avoid. I don't, I think the other thing over here, when I was trying to say that, that's like, it's, um, attempted duck, to bypass. Maybe it's, maybe they meant more like, if there's a security thing on it, they're trying to, to mess with the security or the filtering system, maybe to look at like pornography or something. Maybe that's what they meant.
But gaming is covered under 17. Use of district technology for gaming, social media, streaming during instructional time, unless clear permission is granted by the superintendent or designee.
Okay.
Which would be the deans, the deans working.
And it does say, like, during instructional time. So maybe there is a time where the deans weren't doing-
Okay, so then when they're not doing instruction, then they're getting bigger.
Or if it's instructional and maybe it's an academic game, right? If a math teacher says, I want you to play this academic game, cuz it's gonna help you build on math back skills, all that, the teacher has to do is have permission from the dean of students, who's my designated for this. And I'm assuming that they can work together to figure that out. But that might be a game that's authorized.
They play a lot of, um, games, the tech, each teacher has like a website where there's apps where they play games. And a lot of them are games, but like, they may be, one may be learning how to use your keyboard, but it's an actual game.
I'm saying, like, yeah, my, what my kids use a lot is gaming.
Yeah.
It's a racing game.
Yes.
So it's like.
I think, once again, as people identify, parents, teachers, students, whomever identifies problem areas, we communicate it to us. I talked to Jay about it. We figure out, is there a way to limit that access and do the best we can? Guys, I'm telling you, there is no perfect policy.
Um, so I would actually, I would like to amend my motion to the first and second reading, so that way there we can get this.
That's what Jay was hoping for.
Put into place before the start of school.
We wanna have the handout that we can send home with kids and have it signed, so they can start handing out. We have to wait, then we're looking at it sometime in September.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? About the amendment? No. Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Debbie? No. Okay, I'm sorry. There's too many issues with that policy. I'm not gonna.
Make sure you're looking at the IKV handout.
So IKV with the handout.
Oh, we're doing that one now?
Yes.
IKV homework policy, so I will make a motion to accept policy IKV homework policy for first and second reading.
This is more updated. The last time this was done.
I'll second that. I'm still looking for my handout.
Second, okay. The last one was two thousand two, which was sort of following.
So it was very lengthy, and so we narrowed it down to be very simple, straightforward. We're still including, before it was just, um, twenty minutes of reading per night. That was suggested. We did, we did reading and math. Um, and then we just simplified it. So then in addition to the reading and math, um, K through four, ten minutes of homework, five through eight, an additional twenty minutes. So you have twenty, twenty, and then the first, no, go ahead.
Is that twenty minutes total for all classes?
Yes.
Twenty minutes per class? No, twenty minutes total.
With the tw, with the reading and the math, so it's an hour.
Once again, reading and math is recommended. The parent may say, you know what, I've got, you got gymnastics tonight, you've got this, you've got that. We're not gonna do the reading and math tonight, or we're only gonna do reading, or we're only gonna do math. That's it. The required homework would be the classroom teachers have to work together to figure out what that twenty meant. So it could be that Monday's math, Tuesday's social studies, Wednesday, you get the idea, right? So it could be that, or they might say, no, I've got a project coming up. I need a couple of nights this week. But the team's gonna have to figure that out, so that there's twenty minutes of homework. And if it can't be completed within twenty minutes, that's covered as well.
I, I thought that the reading recommendation, um, meant that it's up to, the teacher can also say, you're gonna have to fill out a log of your reading this.
That's not covered by this policy.
But, okay, but a teacher could.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. So teachers, so teachers could say, you, you know, you need to do your reading log twenty minutes tonight.
Yeah.
And I'm sending you home your flashcards or your whatever for twenty minutes.
Yeah, I think like, well, like, like the younger grades, it was like a reading log. Older grades, it was like, write what you were reading and your agenda.
Yes.
And your parents did, is what I've seen.
I think the biggest thing is that outside of the math fact practice and the nightly reading, Monday through Thursday, grades K to four, teachers can say, here's ten additional minutes of homework. Maybe it might be social studies, maybe whatever. Grades five through eight can do twenty minutes total per night of additional homework.
And the last time, if you looked, of late, was on this, this was two thousand two. Or remember what, yeah, that was.
This also is in our student handbook, so I would recommend first and second reading, so that the handbook can be accurate.
Yes.
I think you made that. When, when we discussed this, excuse me, when we discussed it at the policy meeting, what I had brought up was that this would be a good example, and like Rob's saying, that he can get his team to come up with, um, how they wanna structure this. This would be a good example for an administrative regulation that, that pretty much directs that.
Rob, I saw a lot of really good examples of like, what home, you know, um, I guess, ways to support what they're doing in school at home as homework. Um, you know, whether it's, okay, they were given a task to go look for a certain video to support what they need to do the next day, or whatever that is. And obviously, it's like, we just wanted to leave this as generic as possible and like, he can work. Yeah, on how they handle that.
Alright.
Um, I also, I was looking at some other schools and how they could handle it. And it was, it was just interesting to see how every school does it differently. Like, some have like a homework calendar posted on the website that, so you can go see what they're doing for homework. Another one has a Google file where it's like, at, by two thirty, that they get out earlier. But by two thirty every day, it'll be updated with what the homework assignment is for that night. So you, as a parent, can go look and see what they'll have for homework that night. So it's just interesting how other districts handle that, which is curious, so.
Okay, ready? Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yeah. Katrina?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yeah.
Debbie? Yes. Okay, next.
Page sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one, upper right-hand corner. It's, uh, J I C J. This is the law.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to approve policy J I C J unauthorized communication devices for first and second, as this is required.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, so this is, um, cut and pasted from, yes?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
And this has to do with the law, so.
So what about?
The law.
Belt to go, no personal electronic devices.
And I think they already put this in the, they put it in the policy, so, which I think is very good. It's wonderful. Alright, Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? And Debbie? Yes.
J I C N on page sixty-four, starting on page sixty-four. Student Chromebook Management.
Alright, page sixty-four, I approve for first, or I make a motion to approve for first and second reading policy J I C N, student Chromebook Management.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
And so this is putting forth more the plan of the Chromebooks and how, you know, you get assigned a device, grades four through eight, that's your device. At the end of the eighth grade, you get to keep that device. And so it has some redundancies from the acceptable use policy. Um, but this one's just, talks about Chromebooks specifically.
What happens if, I'm looking at the financial responsibility, if a parent cannot afford the replacement cost because it's damaged and needs to be replaced? So, and they're in fourth grade, they still have four more years of school, do they?
And we would give them another device. It doesn't mean we're not gonna charge them that, that one, if they don't get what they need.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear. I wanna make sure.
For them to, I would, I would assume that they would have the device.
Provide the education the kids need, yes.
Right, but they would have the device to use, so.
Yeah, and might not go home.
They might forever, for years?
No, I don't know. I'm just saying, like, we have to figure that out.
Right, right.
We haven't crossed these situations yet.
Right.
I'm imagining most of our family, just like they are with food, just like they are with other damaged items, they're very supportive. They take care of business. The, the number of people that don't is relatively few. So, and who knows, maybe like with the food, we'll have a slush fund to help support families that can't afford it, things of that nature, so.
Is, is there some kind of pro-rating that goes on with these? Cause I know, like, say it was June when a Google Chromebook was gonna be retired, you know, two weeks from now. And we can't even give those things away at that point.
But that's in the eighth graders' hands. So if they lost it like two weeks before they had a school, then they just wouldn't have it for the last two weeks of school. We would give them something else to tide them over for the last two weeks.
So these are gonna go along with the kids?
Correct. So we're gonna get assigned it and then it's gonna follow them through.
Okay, so would it be pro-rated if they're in sixth grade, they've had it for two years? They have to still pay two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars?
Cause they need a whole device to make it for the next two years. Not a half a device.
No, I, I hear that, but it's an old device, you know, perhaps the one you're gonna need more of it.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever.
Yes, yeah, maybe they can get refurbished.
Alright. Alright, we ready? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
Debbie? No. Alright, alright.
This is recorded, but we'll.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve policy J K A A, use of child restraints in seclusion for first and second reading due to it being required by the law.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second that.
So, um, Rob had told us, they, we've been trying to get this one forward for a little while and just haven't got to it. But, um, they've been following everything in this policy, cause it's law. But we just haven't, we didn't have it on paper, so.
So we're, we're technically in, potentially in violation of the old policy, which we're asking to get rid of because we have to follow the law.
Yep.
Okay, so this is.
Yeah, so everything, the old words, crossing out the old one and putting in the sample NHSBA policy, word for word.
Okay.
For getting them.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? If this is word for word and it's per the National RSA, really, we need to have it, so.
Yeah.
Are we alright with it?
I.
Yes?
I just wanna point out that not everything in here is applicable to our school, like medication restraint, uh, Rob brought up that it's just required that it's in there. The state does not differentiate between the types of school. So I looked at this and go, that's a possibility, you know, look at that, it's kinda shocking to see, but.
Yeah, so we actually did have Rob add at the, at the very beginning, several, which says, several of the items listed in this policy have never been deployed within structured school but are included to ensure compliance with the law. So Rob was on call about this specific policy. And they stated, yes, even though that is not applicable to your school.
You still have to, you still have to. Okay, okay. Alright, Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie? Yes.
Okay, final one with another, you know, which was your welcome.
Oh, who's, alright, so where is the, um, word that you added?
Oh, it's.
Oh, I see, the green energy, okay, so, so this is exactly what we just had on the.
And you guys said to, uh, change one word. You said to add the word after, uh, energy drinks or beverages continue excessive.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve policy J L C F, district wellness policy for final reading in order to be in place before you start this school year.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so this is a revision, adding letter D, energy drinks.
Yes. Okay, and that was recommended by the Wellness Committee unanimously. And also, as it says, American Academy of Pediatrics as well.
And it's already been added to the handbook.
Right. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle? Debbie? Yes.
You did say something about dress code. I didn't bring anything with me.
Okay, do we have a, who has the dress code policy? Can we look it up?
Oh, it's in the handbook, right? Oh, no, you wanted something, I don't have the, um.
Look, we can just do it at the next meeting, if, you know, if you want. Just have him bring a copy of it and we can just have it.
And then we can just.
Cause it's not in the handbook, so then we'll let them, our next meeting just adjust that policy to include the additional wear.
Alright, but, but, yes, but we, we said that we, we put it in the handbook saying, we're adjusting, like, they added it saying, thinking that we were changing the policy, cause it's. Alright, I'm, I don't care. I'm tired. It's good.
Yeah, so that's like, to me, I'm like, it's a couple of weeks.
Alright, alright, so we will, just please make sure we bring that because, um.
I've got it right here.
We did have them put it in the policy. Yes, Natalie, we can keep it in the policy, in the handbook. Okay, cause I know she's looking. I don't hear a beep.
I turned off the volume.
Alright, facility, I think we got all the updates for the facility.
Oh, she texted that.
What'd she say?
I don't know yet.
We need to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna schedule a meeting. Thanks, Deb.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have not had the Food Service Committee meeting. We were going to, we just haven't done it yet.
Yeah, it's supposed to be before our next meeting, so if we don't have that meeting, we'll need to reschedule.
Okay. Did we already have it scheduled? I didn't think I was scheduling.
Yeah. I think so.
What do we, schedule this one?
Food Service Committee, didn't you somehow invite?
It's, I, I told you that it's for the next, the next meeting when we were supposed to have it, so, um, hang on.
That's what it was.
And I asked you if you wanted to change it since we potentially weren't having the August twenty-seventh meeting.
Right.
Scheduled for August twenty-seventh before the board meeting, but now.
Yeah, so if we can question it off to the next one.
Yeah, let's do it for, um, September tenth, okay.
Two, September tenth, okay. Just a quick update from Natalie. On the new wifi, Jay can literally, uh, see every website they're on. So he'll be able to see anything that they've visited, so if you had a problem with student, he can go back and see that. And then he said they're gonna have a rollout plan to slowly send devices home in fourth grade.
Alright, um, next, Education Committee?
No, we haven't, um, we're supposed to have one soon though, I think. They're gonna start to, they wanna schedule, like, quarterly meetings, cause sometimes we go a really long time without meeting.
Okay.
So they wanna schedule like quarterly ones.
Alright.
So, anyway, nothing currently on the calendar.
Okay, so Wellness Committee, no, we have one scheduled.
Oh, Wellness, yeah, it's in October, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, Transportation Committee.
Who cares, it's a kind of.
And Athletic Committee, um, we, we met, we reviewed all of the information, we saw the coaches. We next are gonna, uh, post for the winter coaching positions. So, um, we're very happy that everybody applied for those positions and we have everything. All those positions failed for the fall, great. We also, like Rob mentioned, and into the locker rooms, looked at the volleyball equipment, help is stored, all that, okay. We have your delegate?
Coming up.
Woo-hoo. We missed the date for, um, if we wanted to submit something.
We didn't wanna submit anything.
Yeah. Okay, so DAM Committee, uh, we just got the DAM update, so we're good. Alright, so Rob would like us to not have the August twenty-seventh meeting. That's just why we put as much information in this meeting, so that we don't have to have that meeting.
It's not a passionate desire, I just, um, I don't know what we would discuss in that meeting. So it's really, whether you need it or not, so.
And I know we're probably gonna have to have the hearing and we can do that, you know, it could be very short. It doesn't have to be a regular board meeting.
Potentially, I guess it would just be if we have to have a meeting for hires, so we're not having any hires.
Right.
To do before the summer.
So we can just do.
We may. We have, um, long-term subs that we're looking for, but I don't think it's before the next meeting that we need them, right? Nothing's before, like, the first couple of weeks of September is, okay. And then we have Title One, Reading Position, I'm not sure where that's at. And then Paraprofessionals galore, but once again, I mean, Debbie can either intermally just say, yeah, they can start. We'll just approve at the next meeting type of thing, so.
Okay. Okay, so September, um, tenth would be our next meeting, if everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
And, okay, I'll take that back. We, we probably will have some type of meeting regarding this hearing. And, but that will be very short. It doesn't have to be on a Wednesday. We'll just figure out when we could do it, you know? It should be a very short meeting, once we get the information. It should be a very short meeting, once we get the information. And everything else, I think we're, we're good with. I did want to make one comment, and this is something maybe we can do, add to the policy committee can, I don't know if it's a procedure or a policy for the financials and the manifest, um, I, we, about the two signatures. So I think what I would suggest is either we put something into that procedure or policy saying that, um, during months, during summer vacations, that we would have, we would allow two signatures, or you could leave it up to your chair to make the decision, like, say, there's a whole month of meetings that are canceled. You can leave it to the, the discretion of whoever your chair is, to say, okay, for this month, we only need two signatures. The three signature thing, um, is important for the rest of the year, because you never know who will be on the board. Right now, we have somebody, we have a couple people, especially Jess, who you go, we can rely on you being very careful when you, that you go through the manifest. Um, if, that's always the case. So it's good to have a lot of eyes on it and to do it at a meeting where people can be passing it around. It protects the community, more eyes on something. But when we have a vacation, not to have the, the late themes and all that, and have stress for poor April, I think we need to do something where we can, you know, adjust, you know, occasionally, a couple times a year.
I believe that can be in the policy, because, but I think we talked financial policy a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And it was, at that time, we decided to stay with three.
Right. So we could put some blur, maybe the policy committee can look at that, to just add something that, you know, during like July or during extended vacations, that we can allow for.
I know April and I are not board members, both the second and third, but.
Yes. And I, you see how I remembered it, you know, because I looked for April, but she came and hugged me, right, came in to get the third signature the other day. So anyway, all right, you good? Anything else, other?
Other? I didn't know if Rob had any other.
I do have others, I'll let you go.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think it would be worth acknowledging that we added the five minutes at the start of the day, just because it was such a hot topic at the end of the year last year, that it doesn't really change things for parents, it's what they repeat, or we're actually gaming.
Yeah, letting them know that they are going to be late after 8:40 into 8:45.
True, so we did. Okay, so, so just to stress what Jess just mentioned, is that we did approve, the student handbook has an 8:40 start, instead of an 8:45 start. And that was based on the recommendation of the superintendent who assured us and the front office that all buses were here by that point, all kids in their classroom, so we will gain five minutes of hopefully education time, right, that we can count, so if we ever run that position again.
It adds up to 45 hours for the year.
Five minutes each day?
Yeah, that, that's what you said, Rob, away from 9:90 to 10:30.
I'd have to do the math again.
But it was 10:35.
Yeah, five times 188.
So it puts us 45 hours above the minimum.
That's great.
Well, I think we were at like nine hours above or something like that.
So that's, that's perfect.
So I have two others remaining, this is one of the others. This is from the Stratford County Public Health Network, which is not on the official list, but it does meet all of the board's requirements. Uh, they're a non, well, they're a state organization, so of course it's nonprofit, but, and the activity is free, and does benefit children that could be in our community. So it met all those criteria, so I, I do recommend that we allow us to add them to the authorized list, so I wouldn't have to bring this back again in the future, but once again.
Does somebody want to make a motion? So it's official, commence.
And this would just be to allow them, what, to add them to our list?
To our official list of, when Stratford County Public Health Network reaches out to us and says, hey, can you post this free event? We would be able to post it in the future. We have a list of organizations that we're allowed to do that without coming back to the board every time. For example, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, I'm trying to think of, I mean, there's a bunch of names on there now, I just don't remember them all.
Yeah, okay, um, I move we authorize Stratford County Public Health Network to be added to our list of, um, approved advertisers.
People who are.
Approved, approved, yeah, yeah.
I'll second, okay. So we allow nonprofit groups that are local to post information in our weekly newsletter of activities that would benefit our children, right? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Katrina? Kyle? Debbie? Yes.
According to policy D N, I need the board's permission in order to dispose of an item. We have a GVC Altima 65 laminator that is old and slow, but it still functions. We're thinking that we'd like to try and find a way to either, because your first one is to try and sell it, list it for $150 and see if we get it, or if you're more in the line, we can do number two, which is to donate the item to another organization. Overall, I know the Public Library might be able to use a laminator. So I'm just asking what the board's desire is, because I need your permission.
If, if it's, I would, my, my first inclination would be to see if there's an organization in our town that would want it for free, and then if not, I list it for sale. You know, I mean, the library, the taxpayers paid for this, right? And I think they shouldn't, they should get first dibs on something we don't want, or the town office even. Right? Um, and then we could post it for sale.
Yeah, or just donate it to somebody who could use it in town.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to pick it up in the next week, probably. Because nobody's going to buy it, nobody wants it.
Somebody, but somebody might want it into, if it works a laminator, um, you know, I don't know.
Probably just, I would try to donate it to, you know, local.
Maybe a local preschool.
So what I'm hearing, and you still have to vote on this, is donate, sell, dispose, is the order that you'd like to follow on this process.
I will make a motion for Rob to donate a laminator to a local organization within Stratford, or to advertise to give away for free to somebody within the town, if he just cannot find that organization.
So we're not, you're not talking about selling it all? All right, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Quick discussion, do you want to set a timeline on that?
Yeah, I was just thinking.
I'm holding on to that thing for fun.
I, I would say for a month. Give it enough time for people, because it, it takes a while, maybe we should put that in the newsletter. Is there a local organization that would want?
Yeah, but by the time that gets out, he's already going to have it given away.
Two weeks, okay.
Two weeks. Just put, yeah, two weeks. But anyway, I was just saying, after two weeks, he may dispose.
How could they find somebody? Is it, is it, we'll find somebody?
It's part of the setting.
Couldn't you set it next to the mixing bowl or the popcorn machine?
We're storing that forever. I got that message loud and clear from this board.
That is so valuable.
That thing will sit in there until cows come home.
If we decide to make our own bread.
The annex will collapse around it.
I didn't mind getting rid of the popcorn machine, but the mixing bowl?
The popcorn machine was a safety hazard.
It was like filled with mice.
It was nasty.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm, I lose it.
A little punchy.
Did you, um, got the second? Okay, Kyle? Jess?
I love that, pointed at Eric and said, Kyle.
This means I'm like, that's my bedtime, Eric?
Yes.
Katrina? Kyle? And Debbie? All right, good. Any other other?
Okay, you have another other.
No, that was.
Starting today.
That's a good one. Okay, good, all right. No public, public comments. Do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I will second.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric? Jess? Katrina? Kyle? Debbie? Yes.
9:51, and that's not bad, because.
I was trying to speed things up.
I should work.
It's not bad, but we were getting moving.